You good?
Yes.
Good morning. I would like to open up the village council work session meeting, March 26, 2020, 9:00 AM, Village Hall. I show present, we have Mayor Protem Vandenberg, Councilman Lean, myself as mayor, Robert Epps is absent, and we have, I believe, Councilman Mark Elise on the phone, is that correct?
Yep.
Alright, and he had called in ahead of time saying he would not be able to be here in person, so we have that documented. And I think we have staff, given the circumstances, we have staff, both Barbie, our clerk, and our planner Rohit on the phone as well, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and obviously Christina Elfin, so we're gonna get going, open up the, first up on the agenda is, we need to approve the agenda, do we have any changes?
Um, I want to add, under items of discussion, so that would be 13, we just need to change the location for the April 7th meeting to...
Change what meeting?
The April 7th meeting, we need to change the location to the Fellowship Hall.
So you want to add discussion?
Yeah.
As a, to village, to hall?
Yeah, to Fellowship Hall, and with the church.
And at what meeting is that?
April 7th. We were gonna, we were gonna just change that at this meeting.
So amend the cancel calendar?
Okay, amend calendar, okay.
As items of business number 14, it looks like I misnumbered.
That's, yeah, that's, yeah, that would be 14, okay.
Okay, that's 14, okay, and then 15, we need to, I'd like to add a rules and procedure discussion for electronic meetings, per recommendations from the village attorney.
And that's what you were referring to here, okay.
And that would be number 15.
Okay.
And then, we need to add, I guess we can do, um, uh, we need to add review of action items, not review of action items, but like, the packet, it's not even in here, is it?
No.
So, okay, we won't worry about that, but then you want to add the whole, the open topics?
Yeah, we, I think that was missed, just open topics for any things last minute that came up that we want to discuss.
So new F, just make that open topics?
Can I interject for just a moment?
Sure.
One of the reasons why the, it wasn't added on your agenda is probably because you need to update your rules and procedure to accept that open topics header on the agenda, so maybe that should be part of the discussion in, in number 11?
But it's, it's an agenda item, so if we, if we throw it on the agenda, I-
They can still add it, Barbie, they'll, they'll still add it, and then moving forward, we will put it as a recurring.
Yeah, we, we directed staff to put it on there, it's not on there, so now we're gonna add it on there for this meeting, and we're gonna discuss it in number 11 for going forward.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
So new F would be open topics, then G would be agenda items, H would be closed session, and I would be adjournment, is that right?
Wait, that's on F?
Yes, and the, the new F would be open topics.
Okay.
So then, G would be agenda item, H would be closed session, and I would be adjournment.
Okay.
God bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, got it.
Anything else, Robert, do you have anything? I mean, Bob?
Uh, no, I, I, I was just gonna bring up what Kim brought up, so, thank you, Kim. I'm not, you know, about the rules and procedure for the electronic meeting.
Oh yeah, you're welcome.
Alright.
Okay.
Councilman Lean, do you have anything?
Nothing.
And, yeah, we have a holding spot, so that's open for anything, so, okay, good, I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Still moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, first is, uh, up, we have presentations, nothing there, Village Hall, 10 minutes, is that you, Christina?
Yes, and Rohit, for some reason, this thing is not letting me log in, oh, here it is. Okay, so, a couple of things have transpired since the last meeting, you all had advised us to, um, kind of look at the lease terms, can, can you hear me, Councilmember Mark Elise?
I can hear you.
Okay, um, you all had advised me to look at the, the ground lease terms and try to put some numbers to those, um, to some of those issues that we may be facing, to try to really get a projected cost on that project and compare apples to apples, and what I've done is since met with our financial advisor that we hired, and they've come up with this model, unfortunately, he is unable to really pinpoint a lot of the costs that are associated with a long-term lease, so we really need to look at maybe potentially hiring an engineer to say how much we're gonna save or gain by running water and sewer, groundwork, site work, how things will change. This, do you have a question?
No, hey, Bob, can you just mute yourself on your end until you need to talk, we've got a lot of reverb on, and you guys too, thanks.
Can y'all do the same, Barbie and Rohit?
Yeah, I'm muted.
We did.
Okay, thanks. So what this basically is, what you're seeing here, and I know some of you that aren't in attendance can't see this model, but this is something that we will use in the next couple of months to really determine what options are the best for us to implement a new Village Hall, can y'all see that before? So basically, we've, we've put in the projected cost of the bids that were received down at the street, um, we, we can change this amount, we can put in, we can come in here and change it to, let's just say, wow, I didn't know what I was gonna change it. Okay, I don't know why it's doing that, let me, let me do one thing. Alright, well, I'm having some technical difficulties, but, um, I should be able to change this amount in here, and it's not working for some reason, so we're just, I'm just gonna show you how the model works for option one, basically, what would happen is if we wanted to change this amount, like, let's say we got different scenarios, right now we only have one, which we actually have dollar costs associated with it, so we've put in that number, which is 1.8, we've put in what we have in capital right now, which is 860, so the model actually takes that 860 out and says, alright, you're gonna finance the difference, so, um, we'll come down here and we'll look at the financing in just a second, but there will be a cost of issuance for any debt financing that we have, we're gonna have to get a bond agency to kind of help hold our hand through the process if we, if we go out for bonds, um, if we just want to go out for leasing, we can do that, it's gonna be a very small amount that's associated with the cost.
You mean financing?
Yes, yeah, so we just put that in there, and we estimated really high, I mean, just, just to be safe.
And that's if we go out for bonds?
Yes.
Okay, versus, okay, I got it.
If we go out for lease, or for, for financing, just like with banks, it's not even gonna be a fraction of this, if anything, we would just take that out, so we put in the finance terms at 15, and that's really on the low end, we can bump it up to 30 or 40 if we want to, um, and then we put in the interest rate, and then this lease of land basically means that if we're building down here, we don't have the lease amount here anymore, so that is turned off, we can turn it on, and it changes the amounts, so I'm gonna turn it off for right now, so you can see what the impact is, so over the course of 15 years, if we're financing the difference, here's gonna be our payments annually, for 15 years, and that's what it means tax impact wise, just for this project alone. So, um-
I don't understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Slow down here, so we're doing a, saying you're putting in a 15-year term-
Yeah.
-we're assuming 3% interest.
Yep.
The project cost is essentially 1-
1, 1, 1, 840 minus-
1, 840, um-
And then they're, they're minusing out this 860, so whatever that difference is, a million dollars.
These principal interest that you have down below, 65,333, that's in the first year?
Yes.
We've paid?
We will have paid, that's the projected paid amount.
In 12 months?
It's over 15 years, it's a 15-year term, so it's gonna be much higher, but, but the tax impact, that's what I don't understand, is that like 95 cents, or?
It's, it's-
Point 95?
Point 95.
Okay, of like 1 cent, okay.
Yeah, sorry, you can't see that very good from the camera.
I was like, oh.
Let me see if I can change it in here. I might be able to change it here.
So our payments are $5,400 a month approximately for that first?
Hang on one second, sorry.
That'd be about right.
For the first year.
Actually, that does seem high.
Hmm, where is it enabled?
Is that what rates are, 3%?
I'm sure we can get it for lower, I mean, that, I mean, they're just dropping like a-
You really have to look at the formula in the, in the cell, in the Excel spreadsheet, to see how it calculates that up.
Trying to see why it's not letting me change, make changes.
Because that still seems, that, is it?
Sorry?
A 3% on a 15.
Of course, I normally have my real estate calculator here and can do that like that in my-
I've got a loan calculator, what, what's, um-
No, it's, it, it figures out interest rates and all that kind of stuff, and term, and you just plug it in and it shoots it right back out at you, so I can quickly, based on just the loan amount, not taxes and insurance, that kind of stuff, but just the loan, principal and interest, basically.
I don't, I don't know why it's not letting me change it.
See, what I don't understand is why is it not, why it's not showing us the figure of the, the finance figure, because right now you've got, you've got-
Rohit, do you know why this wouldn't be working on the computer? Does it work, it works on my computer?
Wait, you're doing something that's working on your computer that's not working on your computer?
Yes, yeah.
Um, okay, well then, there's some instructions on the keyboard, um, if you do that, then it should fix it.
No, it's, no, it's, it's showing, it's projecting, that's fine, it's just, it's not letting me enable editing.
It's not computing, it's not figuring in, when she changes the number, it's not refiguring.
It's like it's restricted.
Is there any pop-ups on the screen that says enable editing?
No, that's, that's what I was looking for.
I can't, the top of that screen was-
What were you saying, Jamie?
I don't see the figure, you see how, what we were saying was, you had a million eight, and you take the 800,000 out, it should be, you should see the million eight-
Yeah.
If you take the equity out, let's just round it and say it's 800, so that's, you should be financing 1 million.
Right.
Okay, I don't see the 1 million anywhere.
It's over on the output, it's 980 at the top, right? Is that what you're saving, right there?
Right, but where, but where is the 1 million, because if you take the village equity contribution, if you take that out, it shouldn't be total sources of-
He wants to see the 1 million equals 9, 94.
Right.
Yeah, so that's-
And I can't, I can't get to the form-
Okay, so the 65,000 represents a loan at 1 million dollars, right?
Okay, what are you doing exactly? I'm not trying to do something.
So I'm trying to change like the project cost?
And it still seems a little 5,000, well, that's probably right.
The project cost?
At 3%, 50.
It lets me change it on my computer.
And then, but here, to your point, I don't understand, ten extent pay.
It's point 95 a cent, it's not 95 cents, it's point 95 of 1, of 1 cent, so it's almost a cent, I thought it was like, I was like, whoa.
So the effect, and this is every year that we'd have to consider, the next year would be-
I don't think we have to raise, I think we have to base it.
You don't have to raise taxes every year.
I don't think so, I think it would be a little higher.
So it affects the tax, it actually puts more money in the coffers in the sense that-
Yeah, for afterwards, I think, I think that you raise the 1 cent, then it would-
Are you in the V drive right now?
I just have the problem, what if we were to just try closing the spreadsheet and opening it up again?
I've already done that three times.
Office quick. ABE, all that crap.
Because like the projected, like, this spreadsheet that-
I've already done it.
So it's a little higher, but that's not-
Do the, do me a favor real fast, on your end, change the projected cost in the input section to a million dollars.
1 million, okay.
And then change the financing terms to, let's just say 30.
What's that?
30 years, okay.
Yeah, and then the interest rate to 4? 860.
860.
And just save that real fast, save that real fast on, on the V drive, and I'll just pull it up.
Alright, I'm gonna save it as, and, uh-
Tell me where you're saving it.
Okay, um, I'm gonna save it under, just the base administrative folder.
Okay.
Um, and, okay, done it.
What's the title?
It's just the same thing with the extra, uh, extra numbers, installment financing model with 1,030.
Got it.
Now you just click read only, so now you can't change it.
Hang on.
Oh yeah, I have to close it, I have to close it, because I had it open, okay, try opening it again.
Try now.
Kim's right.
Okay, so, this is, I still can't change it, but I got him to change some amount, so y'all can see the difference.
How do you know you can't change it now?
Doing the same thing.
Remember that, but their price went up, oh, because we're at 4%.
There.
There we go.
28 million.
Alright, so- No, let me try mine again, hang on.
There you go.
There we go, okay, we're good now, I don't know what, what happened, okay.
Maybe Rohit was in it and it was, it was read only.
Alright, so, the amount initially was 1, was here.
Yeah.
So, let's say there was another option we wanted to consider that was a million.
Okay.
That's how it would be impacted, it would be-
Point 1.7 of-
1 cent.
1 cent.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not even a penny, so, but if we raised, so we came in and had a, correct me if I'm wrong, we wanted to get another officer and finance Town Hall, we're looking at probably 2 cents to do that.
Yes, so, and that's if you have, that's depending on what project you pick for Village Hall, you know, if it's gonna be a 1.8 million dollar project, if it's gonna be a million dollar project, if it's gonna be a 1.5, whatever.
Right.
And we have to do that by the time we pass the budget, correct? Or can we raise taxes at any point we want to?
No, you can't, no.
You can't do that, no.
So we have to make a decision.
Yes, if you're gonna do it this year, tax-wise, now, now, keep in mind though, that if you're gonna do Village Hall, you're probably not gonna have a payment to come due until the construction is complete, so you, you should be okay to do it for next year and still start the project, that makes sense.
Because we have enough in the coffers to do, but, but-
You can make a few payments, but yeah.
But we have to be prepared to then go ahead and raise it next year, like, it's not even a question, it's, it has to be done.
But, so, here, again, this is worst-case scenario, 1.8 is cost of issuance, 40,000, that's a very small, low 15-year term, it's basically 1 cent, now, if you want to go over here and change the financing to, let's say, 30 years, and let's just say worst-case scenario, let's just say 4.5%.
Okay, wait, if I can change the financing term?
Oh.
Yeah.
It even, reduces it even further, so-
But it's still, I mean, you can, can you, I mean, I guess you could raise it 0.65
Yeah, you could, yeah.
Of a penny, right?
You could, yeah, for sure, but this just kind of shows you how it works and how the model's gonna work, so what's gonna happen when, so there's two things that are going in conjunction with this, if you really truly want me to figure out the, the cost of these, um, terms, and some of the, the associated savings that may be taken with reduced site work, and adding water sewer, I'm really gonna need to hire an engineer, I can get AMT to do it, I've already talked with them about giving a real good cost estimate of how much it's gonna cost, Rohit and I can tell you how much we think it's gonna be, based on our expertise, but really, we need to have someone who knows what they're doing to come in and justify those numbers.
Well, I mean, don't we think that we're at that point where we need to make that decision, like, we're, I mean, it sounds like the church is on board if we want to do it, and it monetarily makes sense, so I feel like we need to have hard numbers before we can really move forward, and-
And, and I'm okay with that, but I think we do need to get a little bit of confirmation with the elders in the church of where they're at and stuff like that, the only thing that throws a flag up for me, quite frankly, is an agreement that we would have to tear this building down, and what we can find is, they noted, if there's asbestos and stuff, and all of a sudden we have a-
Well, there's, that's what we talked about last meeting, like, there's negotiation points that we can-
But we just leave it, and for them to, to, to do it, I, I mean, what I'm saying is, we would stay here.
As I said before, I think it'd be an added plus for them to keep it here, because if Scott's not gonna be there forever, and if he were sitting here, he would say, I'm not gonna be here forever, so, that's added incentive for someone coming in to be able to use, possibly uses as a marshmallow.
Living quarters, or whatever they want, you know, community center and stuff, it just, yeah, that would be on them, but that, that's where we start knocking things down, and we don't know what we're getting into, it's just, but, use it as a continuing space to operate until we can get that, I think that would-
And we can estimate that in at worst-case scenario, so we can have that amount, and then we can have best-case scenario, so we know kind of a fluctuation.
Okay, and then, we had talked about, Joe had mentioned it briefly in the last meeting, and then John Jones had mentioned it to me, so I mentioned it to you, talking to this church.
And I've reached out to them, they will have a meeting in the beginning of May, is, is when they will get back to us, she said that, um, they do use it for certain purposes, and I told her, you know, we, we would be up for negotiations if we wanted to reserve a spot for them to continue to, to, to offer services, whatever it is, and that, you know, that's up for discussion when we get to that point, so I did let her know that, and she's gonna present-
You let her know what?
That if, that, because they still have services there, and she was pretty, she was, she said that she didn't think that they were gonna be interested in doing anything, because they still use it a lot, and I said, well, there may be an option, that if we had like an assembly room or something, y'all could still carry out your services in our facilities, and we can work through that.
I see what you're saying, okay.
And that's just details we would have to work through, if y'all are willing to, to allow that.
Well, I mean, I think when we build Town Hall, we're willing to allow HOAs to come in and use the assembly room, so I don't know why we wouldn't be willing to do that as well, so.
And that was kind of my thought process behind it, and that's just, you know, we'll discuss it when we get to that point, if they're willing to look into it.
Okay.
So are y'all of the consensus that it's okay for me to consult with AMT to go ahead and get some dollar costs associated with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Bob?
Yes, I'm listening.
Do you have any, uh, comments, or you're okay with us moving forward with AMT?
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm, let's move forward, I'm good.
Okay.
It all sounds plausible.
Alright, we didn't forget about you, just because you're not here.
No, it's okay, you call, when you, when you address me, I just have to make sure to put this thing on mute, you know, unmute it, so it doesn't appear.
Alright.
So basically, just so y'all know, moving forward on this financial analysis, this is kind of how it's gonna work, is they're gonna have a layout of all the different options, they're gonna have Village Hall, we've got to pick Village Hall option first, whatever that means financially, then they're gonna have the cost of service for solid waste, what's in our CIP now, um, law enforcement, and they're gonna isolate it all out, so you'll see exactly, if you want to do all these things, this is how much it's gonna be, but the model's gonna be the exact same, so you'll see that tax impact, and you can turn on and off certain projects, let's say, solid waste is just too much, we don't want to talk about it, so we'll turn it off, and then you see how all the other projects associate with said tax and battery.
So, Jamie, this is all, my understanding, or maybe it's a question for you, Christina, is, this is all one lot, this property here, extending all the way there, so are we getting into, because I think, if I'm not mistaken, is you have, in a lease situation, you have someone paying property taxes on the land, somebody paying property taxes on the actual building, and that gets separated, so, would they subdivide, or did it be a cost in subdividing, or is there just, and, and I don't know, maybe this is a question for the tax man, that, do they look at that little parcel where we're putting, and how much are we, are we actually getting as far as parking, parking and all that, what that equates to the percentage of the total property, and how you look, because this is gonna be a little bit more because it has a building on it, that is just raw land, and then separately would be the, the building and what that gets taxed at, so I think, I, I just don't know how much of the, what they're willing to give up as far as if we were to move Town Hall just a little bit down and stuff, so, they, probably haven't got into specifics yet, I'm sure, but-
I haven't, but, I mean-
Because we have to, along with the building, my understanding, and Rohit, correct me if I'm wrong, is we have to have 28 parking spaces?
Um, it's 26, yes.
Okay, 26 parking spaces, we'll have to go along with whatever we decide to do, and that's gonna take up a little bit more, but-
I'll get some answers, because I think there's some exemptions there, so, let me, let me look into that question.
Okay, alright, anything else, any other questions?
I can, Mr. Mayor, I can answer the question before that, too, which is, um, you know, we have a lot that's separate for this current Village Hall site, and the simplest way would just be a lot line revision to move that lot boundary to wherever the new Village Hall is going, especially if we're going to be demolishing this one, and so there's just gonna be the same number of parcels.
He's, he's talking about its tax, not, not necessarily lot lines, he's trying to, he's trying to isolate the tax evaluation.
And I, I don't want to get into subdividing this piece of property and stuff.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to subdivide it, because it's already two lots, we could just change the shape.
Okay, alright, we good?
Yep.
Alright, moving on, D, items of discussion, discussion of Waxaw Marvin Road streetlights, Rohit?
So I'll open this up actually real fast, we, we had a request, I think it was actually submitted to you, Mr. Mayor, um, yeah, yeah, it was, to implement some lights at a, um, intersection for safety reasons, and once we looked into it, we, we realized that only one corner of that, um, that area was in our jurisdiction to even implement streetlights, so I reached out back to the property on, or to the complainant, and let him know the situation, that he could talk with Waxaw, because a portion of it's in Waxaw, a portion of it's in unincorporated Union County, unincorporated Union County gets apparently requests like this all the time, and they don't have a set policy for doing this, so they basically said they're not interested, um, Waxaw said they would look into it, here we are, the third party, with just one little tiny corner of it, if y'all are interested in proceeding with it, and Rohit, you can interject or add to this, um, we can do so, but this is not something that we budget, not something we have a policy for, so, just moving forward, we know that if we get future requests, we need to be prepared for that as well.
Which corner is it?
Go ahead.
If you look in the agenda packet, I have a map with the intersections numbered that corresponds to the emails that, that's right for the map, at the top of the email, I have number 1 in Fons Grove, Church Road, Waxaw Marvin, 2, Pray Road, Waxaw Marvin, and 3 is Henry Nesbit in Waxaw Marvin, and you can see on the map, as, you know, you see where the yellow is in Marvin, the white is not, um, you can see how each of these intersections have, uh, you know, half, half or quarter in Marvin, and the rest is in the county, so, what Christina is saying is, we could look into putting, uh, streetlights on the side of the road that is in Marvin.
And which intersection was, was he specifically concerned about?
He actually, let's see, in the, I have the whole email thread, um, and he did list all three intersections, um, on page, on the bottom of page 2 of that email, in the blue section, he listed all of those three intersections.
Rohit, do you remember the cost, was it, like, I don't know, somewhere between 10 and 20 dollars a month?
I didn't, I don't think I was in that conversation, sorry.
Yeah, I think that's, let's just say 20.
And this gentleman lives in Waxaw, in Mount Marvin?
That's right, he said, he also said that in the email, he's a resident of Waxaw.
Okay, and did Waxaw get back to him?
They did, they just said they would look into it, that's all, they're in between, they're in, to be honest, though, they're in between managers right now, so I don't know how, how fast that process is gonna-
Yeah, also in the email thread, it says you need to go contact Marvin, because the areas of, that are your concern are in Marvin.
Who said that?
Um, let's see, Laura Jean, Deputy Division Traffic Engineer, said that.
Well, that's with DOT, that, he's, he's contacted DOT first.
Oh, right, right, but then they said you need to go contact Marvin because-
Because they're all in the town of Marvin, which they're not.
Well, they're not, not in Waxaw, they are in Marvin and the county, none of them are partially in Waxaw, none of the three that he mentioned.
Gotcha, and so, and so, unincorporated, so Union County basically said, "We're not interested back."
Yes, in a nutshell, yes.
I mean, I think, I mean, I think if it's in Mar, I mean, I think if they're in Marvin, if we can put up some safety stuff and, I mean, I've got, I mean, I've got no problem making stuff safer, and it does get dark out here because there aren't...
And what we can do, if y'all are interested in this, I mean, y'all can make a decision on this specific one, this specific request right now, and we can put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting, or if you want us to look into policies and putting, you know, some funding in the budget and how we're going to make decisions based on that, those requests, we can do that as well.
Is that, is this, would this be the same process as getting the lights up on the roundabouts?
Um, no, because that's something that we initiated ourselves, that we identified as a, as a safety concern, and this is coming in as a third-party request, so, I mean, y'all can look at this and say, "Yes, you've identified it as a safety concern," but then moving forward when you get other requests...
But I mean, would the process be the same?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We contact Union County, being cooperative, and say, "Hey, we want to throw up some lights," and they're like, "Well, we'll think about it," and then it's a year later before we get anything put up.
Well, keep in mind that, you know, some of these requests, we're going to have to have a light study done because DOT is going to require some of these things. There's going to be a lot more costs that are indirect associated with just putting up simply a light.
And that's where I would say that, you know, before we just jump ahead, and I'm not trying to delay anything, however, I think it's probably prudent for us because then who comes next, sends the letter, and then if we have a policy in place and a process on how this gets done, and then, okay, start with this, determine where it's located, and then, I'm sure Waxaw has a policy, Union County probably has a policy, do we? And if we don't, we need to have a policy first before we just go, you know, respond to this gentleman's legitimate concern and just say, "Okay, let's focus on that first," and then, you know, I'm more than happy to address any, to your point, Kim, any of your safety concerns, regardless of where it is, but if we don't have a policy in place, it's kind of like the same thing when we talked about the policy for WC, WAA, so...
I totally agree.
So what we can do in the meantime is, we can reach out to some other municipalities and, you know, see what their policies look like, and also get, you know, real hardcore costs associated with these light studies and things that would need to be done. We can try to have it at the next work session, in the meantime, we can respond to the complainant and just let them know that we're still interested, we're looking into it in more detail and just trying to find out, you know, exactly how much it's going to cost to get this done, so...
And actually ask them, because I think either way, we still move forward with the policy.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a problem with that? I mean, does anyone have a problem with that?
They have even more, because something that's going, is going to...
It's going to continue to come up, and, you know, we'll see it with everything from street crossings to lights to whatever.
I'm good with that.
Everybody.
Okay.
Yep.
Bob, you good?
I'm good.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
So if somebody can just get back to the complaint and let them know that we're...
Yep, Rohit, can you do that?
Rohit, you're...
What was the exact construction?
Just get back with the complainant and let him know what we're doing to continue to assess.
Yeah, and either way, we're going to be putting a policy in place, but we are on board with addressing the safety issues of residents and non-residents for that matter. But, you know, we just don't have a policy in place, we'll start there and then actually, you know, probably move forward fairly quickly, I would think, with this particular concerns.
All right.
Okay, next up, we have discussion of law enforcement, contract, and additional officers.
So I'm going to pass out, I don't know if y'all really need this, I don't even know if you can see it, to be honest with you, because it's really hard to see.
So just for the, the public, we, and I know Christina's going to present here, you need this, okay, is both Kim and I and also Christina sat in, we did a phone call in, given the circumstances, but with Sheriff Kathy, or Sheriff Kathy, is that a week ago or so, on the phone, and spent an hour on the phone with him addressing some of the contract issues and concerns and stuff like that, so I just want to let the public know it was a sort of a, it was an actual scheduled meeting, but we were there by phone and addressed a couple of issues, and I'll turn it over to Christina.
So pursuant to that meeting, I actually have incorporated the agreement that we have in your agenda packets to go through. I know, I know there was a desire to make some changes to the contract and just wanted to go over that in detail and see what parts of the contract needed to be renegotiated. I know there was some questions and interest in doing a, like a one-district area between different municipalities that could consist of Weddington, Marvin, and Wesley Chapel. So inside your agenda packets, I've included the calls for service, that you can see kind of how they've been the last couple of years, because one of the caveats that we're going to have to figure out is how many officers Weddington needs, how many officers, whatever jurisdiction we partner with, how many officers said jurisdictions need, and what percentage of that is reflective in the contract payment amount. So that's included in your agenda packet. Also, I'm drawing some of these charts, so you can see the calls for service and how they've either increased or decreased or remained the same over the last several years.
I will, I'll start. So in our conversations with Sheriff Kathy, we had indicated that we were interested in possibly having some shared services between some neighboring municipalities, and he indicated that the other municipalities weren't interested, which the mayor and I had sat down and had conversations over a year ago with multiple municipalities about shared services, and they were interested. I reached out to one of the council members in Weddington to see if they were still interested in doing that, and he said, "Absolutely." They said they are in the process of trying to return fire back to the county and that they're number-one priority right now, but that he is very interested in continuing the conversations, he thinks that it's financially feasible, so that is something that he said he's kind of jammed up until the beginning of April.
And that's since you, we've talked to Sheriff Kathy, you've reached back out to him, okay?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
So the sheriff basically said, "There's no interest," and he's probably hearing from the leaders, the mayor of both Weddington and Wesley Chapel, and just is basically taking his direction that way, where we're hearing different from the actual...
I don't know where he's getting his information from, but I'm getting it from a council, like a current council member in Weddington, so...
So they're open to it?
They're open to it, and think that it is a very good idea.
In fairness, I think the sheriff was open to it, if we're willing to do it...
I think he was fine with it, I don't think he had a problem with doing it, he just indicated that there was no interest.
Would y'all like to have, like, a joint session with these other entities, so we can hash everything out and...
I think we need to kind of do it like this first, because I would rather than get their buy-in first than, because if we, if we had brought, if we had brought all the, you know, a couple municipalities together, you know, last year, we would have gotten, nothing would have happened. So I would much rather get the buy-in upfront and then sit down and then kind of hash out what the details and what it might look like, and if it would actually work or not.
Well, I, I think we're actually, I think this council is actually open to that and is willing to move...
Yeah, we are, but I don't know about...
So my, my point to that, instead of having a meeting where they'd have to call a thing, is, is like, we, two individuals from our council, reach out to maybe two individuals from other councils and say, "At least, here, here's where we're at, get it on your agenda for discussion," where they can bring it up on the agenda and then talk this out. I know Wesley Chapel, I'm talking to a council member there, he's more concerned with what the actual contract look like, looks like, and what the cost is going to be, because that, to him, is very unclear, and they're, he's at the point where if it was just him making the decision, it sounds like that they're considering just getting rid of their sheriff officer altogether if, if the price isn't right, and, you know, but I'll let you continue as far as the meeting and stuff, but I think that's where we could, I think that's where we could go.
And that's what I'm saying, I think we need to do a little sausage-making before we come together as, as full laddies, before we...
And, and maybe you, and since you have a contact with Weddington, either grab Jamie or Bob or myself, and we can, we can make that happen without having official meetings.
And he's, and he's going to, like I said, he's, he's kind of jammed up until the beginning of April, and he's going to reach back out, and he's also going to talk to their finance and finance director and administrator.
Is this something that we are trying to do before the first of the year, as far as the fiscal year?
I mean, I, I don't think it'll happen, I mean, I'm right for it to happen, but I don't think it's going to, and I think we can continue, I mean, I think we're, it's going to be a process, so I hope we're going to be able to get it done in the next two months.
But budget-wise, are we able to, say, if we would move forward with it, would we be able to financially add in, say, September?
We can add a tax impact after...
Not a tax impact, an officer.
Yes, we can still do that.
And, and do that, there's enough money that we can, and then in following budget year, you add a full, if we need to.
Well, I think that if, I think we, I think we need to make a decision if we want to go ahead and add another officer, just us, before...
But I thought part...
Before this contract is done.
Yeah, but I...
Because either way, we're going to, I think we're going to need an additional...
We're going to incur the cost, either way.
Right, correct.
So we, I think to Kim's point, we're going to incur the cost, it's just how big a bite of the apple we want, we want to take.
Right, and we should go, I mean, in my opinion, I think that we should have another deputy.
Well, and this, it was in survey.
Yeah.
Irregardless of, you know, what we think or, you know, how it shoots down, I think it, I mean...
Can I grab something regarding, well, we've, we've all agreed that we would like to have another officer, and it's something that's been wanted by the community, and did we, didn't we budget for, didn't we budget for an extra person?
We did, we budgeted for full-time traffic control, so that would be off-duty officers instead of...
Okay, that leads me into now what I was going to suggest. Given, given now with this COVID-19 situation, the officers that are directing traffic now are virtually not needed, there doesn't seem to be any backup of traffic, there's just nobody on the road, it almost seems like now we're spending money, again, we don't know how long this is going to last, but if it was there in place and was meant to be in place to handle traffic, especially the school being in, you know, now school is, is extended out to, well, I'm going to guess it's May 15th, but I'm not sure specifically. I know that Mecklenburg County schools, well, May 15th, I don't know with Union County schools, but my, my thought is that school's not going to be in session for the rest of this semester. So what I'm getting at is, do we really need to have the officers now at that intersection, and can we use maybe the savings of that towards what you were talking about here as far as budgeting for some people or full-time person later on?
I mean, I, yes, I think we can, I think that we don't just have the officers there for school times, because we extended it through the summer, because it still backs up in the summer, but I think right now, everybody's working from home, which is why there is no backup, and so I think, I think if we want to take off the schedule, Christina, for the next, like, few weeks until people start...
Until further, let's just put till further notice, and then we start seeing issues, and then, and then we'll give you the authority maybe to reinstate that without us having to come to a meeting to say, "Okay, they call it, we don't have to wait a month to..."
But yeah, Bob, I think you're right, I think, I think that right now, we don't, because there has been no traffic, and I mean, there's been nobody backed up for the past probably week.
Look at you, Bob, saving the village some money, I like that.
But I, but as much as I would like, yeah, from home, as much as I would like to think that that savings would be able to cover an additional officer, it's, I mean, it's not going to, so I think we're, I think we're going to have to...
Where does that come from right now, the fund?
General fund.
General fund, it comes from the general fund right now, so, but it would just go back into there, but that's a great point, I think we just put that on hold. Can we make that motion now, or take that directive now?
I think we can just give you the direction to...
Yeah, I can do that.
You don't have to do a motion for that, okay, so just put it on hold, let them know that until further notice, and then we'll let you decide.
And again, Sheriff Kathy indicated that, because it was so difficult for them to fill those positions, that they're going to maybe possibly start charging us more for those, for those officers.
Yeah, he, he did, he did suggest that, he said that was his, I think his, one of his agenda items was he wanted to increase what we are paying for those officers on that corner. I right away responded in the meeting that we might consider reaching out to a construction firm, which is what's talked about before, where they, on a daily basis, bring out construction cones, and you have guys with stop signs, basically construction workers at 15 bucks an hour on that corner directing traffic. Yes, you don't have the ability to pull someone over or do that, but you have well-lit corner that can be provided by a construction company, and we write an agreement with them, and I don't see, I think it's probably a little bit of negotiating with DOT, because technically there's not really construction going on there, but it's a different way to, let's call it skin the cat, if you will, and so I kind of threw that back as far as an option, and I'd like to explore that as even going forward, because if they're just going to come in and say, "We just need to raise prices," you know, we, we have to have other options, and I think that's a, that's a valid option to actually at least pursue a large construction company we hire, because we're going to do it daily anyways, regardless of school in, school out, and see if that's, that's a possibility. I certainly don't think it's going to be more than what the sheriff's department's going to be asking.
Okay, that's an option.
And, and Captain Markleese, just so you know, when we're talking about adding an additional officer, like, in perpetuity, we have to have the funding for that in perpetuity as well, so we can, we can have savings now associated with these, you know, reduction in off-duty, but we need to consider how much that's going to cost next year and how we're going to come up with that money. So roughly, we've discussed that it costs about one cent on the tax rate for an additional officer, so in the back of our minds, when we know, we talk about additional officers, we roughly know we have to go up one cent, so just apply. So I will proceed with telling the off-duty officers to cease, and what will happen is that money will just be put back into fund balance at the end of the year, and we'll continue to assess that on a staff level and re-implement that when we see the time.
Yeah, and I mean, again, I think that if I'm looking at the contract for the sheriff's department, which I, which I am looking at it, we have agreed, the sheriff has agreed to station three deputy sheriffs within the municipal limits of the village of Marvin. Now, it does say that we've agreed to pay for those three, but our original contract with the county says three officers.
And that's dated when?
2009.
Sixteenth, day of September, 2009.
So just for the record, we just, for the record, in case someone will want to come back to him and say, "There's an updated contract," or "You're missing the updated contract," we've got, we have a date on it.
This, this is the contract that automatically renewed, but...
Kim, you were in high school then, right, 2009?
No, oh my God.
And I actually reached out to the county, and that's the latest copy that they have as well, so that's, that's our latest copy.
So, so regard, like, so regardless, we are under, I mean, in 2009, they, they thought that we needed three officers, and somehow that got lowered to one, now, when did that happen? I have no idea, but at the very least, I think we need to be adding an additional officer.
And, and for you council members that weren't at the meeting, and for the public, we discussed the need for having a say. Usually, when you have a contract, parties come together and they both have an agreement together. This is basically directing where we have little say in what we get for our contracted dollars, or what, you know, the contract that we have, so we, we don't have much say, and one of the things that I questioned in the meeting was, and I understand it, is that in, if we have our, let's say, our full-time officer happens to be on duty here and working, however, he is the closest officer to... however, he is the closest officer to a incident that is going on, um, whatever it is, robbery in progress, or whatever, and he has to be called away because he's the closest, um, officer on duty, he actually gets pulled away, and how, how do we get sort of, if you will? I understand why they're doing it, but how do we get reimbursed, and do we get reimbursed for that? Same thing that happens with the officers that we pay for on the corner that are, um, we pay them for three hours of work. However, if there's a call that goes out, they have to, they're required to respond to that. The, the key to that is, in my conversation with another town who's thinking of actually getting rid of the sheriff's agreement and the sheriff's extra officers that they have, because their point, and our point too, was it's sort of double-dipping. We pay Union County, that's required anyways, to have an officer, um, you know, and I think the sheriff pointed out that one of the, when we formed our town, one of the agreements was that we were supposed to have additional, um, officers as part of that charter, um, which we've been doing. However, if you have a town like Wesley Chapel who removes an off, all their officers, and we add one, now think about this, and calls are going out, and the, and, and the closest respondent happens to be from Marvin, we're actually, you know, paying for more officers. However, we're gonna find that th- they're gonna be going over to Wesley Chapel or, uh, other, other towns, because these towns haven't agreed to actually add. It, it, it doesn't make any sense, so we gotta clean up the language, was my point.
Right, and that, so that was, I had in number two, so I got, let me do two things. So yes, I agree with you, we need to be compensated for the time away from Marvin. But, um, I, I would say that, um, the sheriff didn't particularly care for the double-dipping term, um, as I used it, as you used it, because he said, well, you're still getting services from the county, and it looks like, and Christine, if I'm, if I'm reading this chart wrong, it looks like we get seventy-six percent of our calls are answered by other in twenty nineteen. Is that right?
I don't know, I'm gonna look at this for a sec.
Um, and if that's the case, well, then, he, you know, his point was, well, you guys said in your charter that you were gonna have law enforcement. Well, if seventy-six percent of our calls are getting answered by other, and not by Marvin, then I don't know why we're paying for one, 'cause we still get services.
Yeah, the majority of the time, it's being served by others.
That number is accurate, yes, you're right.
So. Um, so, I thought that was what I'm talking about. Um, so, you know, my point is, we either need to clean up this contract and get it to where it's more equitable for the village. Or we, I mean, seventy-six percent of our calls are being answered by not Marvin. We just won't have somebody sitting here pulling cars and doing that. Now, you know.
Or we, we, we visit, um, seventy-six percent. In those seventy-six percent, what times are those? What, what are the biggest time concerns that we have that are, that are having crime going on within Marvin? We look at that and say, you know what? We, we, we don't want, because in the past, we've allowed the officer to kinda, correct me if I'm wrong, kinda set his own schedule of forty hours, and he does it for what, whatever it is.
Steven's a little more amendable to changing up his schedule.
And that's fine, yeah.
Steven and I actually currently do look at the calls for service, what hours they are, and we overlay his schedule over the hours for.
And that's, but, but, but we should say that in a contract that we're able to do that, not.
Which it doesn't. It says, neither the village nor any of its employees or elected official have the, shall have the right to control, direct, or supervise the activities of the deputy sheriff of the side of the village for purposes of this agreement.
What number is that, just so I can see?
That's number four.
Yeah.
So, um, so under number two.
The activities, that's, that's about activities, telling them what to do. But how about, how about specifically hours, working hours? That's not working hours, that's activities. We can't tell, I think what that's saying, Kim, is we can't tell an officer, hey, you need to go down to this corner right now and direct traffic, because we're having an issue down there.
Why can't we do that?
Because we don't have the authority to do that.
I know, but we should, we should be able to have that. So this, this still, this still hurts me here, because if we've got people run, I mean, speeding on Joe Carr, we ought to be able to say, hey, from this time to this time, can you go down to Joe Carr and sit there and pull people? We ought to be able to, I mean, I'm not saying you need to go out and arrest somebody, but in terms of the stuff that we have the deputies in Marvin for, we ought to have some, some level of direction that we can give them. Um, but, I mean, but I still read this, I mean, super, because the activities, like, I still think activities would include, like, what their schedule is. I didn't read anything in here about that, but.
Well, it should be added specifically, so we're talking, we have more control on what hours we want. And if, if we can work it out with the sheriff, what, what issue do they have other than scheduling issue with the sheriff's department? Because they gotta get a car available for this individual, I assume?
Well, we have our villa, I mean, he has.
No, the, the car comes from the sheriff's department, which has to be checked out.
Marvin, I mean, we have one. Is that what you're saying?
No, I think what I'm saying is, that, that is not our car.
Oh, no, that's not our car, that's the county's car.
Yeah, and they just.
But it's Village of Marvin designated.
Right, but on the outside of the car, it says.
Oh, yeah, Union County.
Union County. But my point is, if we're gonna have control when we want him there, on their side, they gotta make sure a car is available, and, you know, so that's where the, excuse me, the, um, the back and forth comes in, is like, they may not have a limitless amount of cars, and anytime we want an officer on duty, they have a car available for them.
But don't you think that the one that has Village of Marvin on there is just for the village?
No.
You don't?
Okay, it's, well, it's Steven's car, and he's the only one that drives it.
And it's just designated.
His house.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I have that, this may be, this may be off, off-topic. It's, it's on the topic, but if, back, if we go back to two thousand nine, we have a two thousand nine contract that stipulates three officers for the Village of Marvin. Did we or did we not budget in the annual budget monies for three? We did not.
I mean, not since I've been here, yeah.
Not, not since I've been here.
It's always been for one, so. I mean, this isn't.
So Joe, you've been here since thirteen, and we've only had one, right?
Yes, yeah, we've only all budgeted for one every year. And that's an additional officer to what Union County in our eighty-six or whatever cents we paid. We have service available, but the sheriff's point in the meeting was, well, when you chartered to become Marvin, you agreed to provide service. One of those services are, um, patrol officers. Now, in the agreement, it says three, and.
I'd love to look back at the budget and see if we budgeted three at any point.
Is there a way you can go way back to two thousand thirteen?
It would just.
Two thousand and nine.
I would be, I would be, I guess, maybe surprised, maybe not surprised, that if you signed a contract, every contract typically has a financial impact to it. So if you have three, all I'm saying is, is if it had three, did we budget for three? If we have budgeted for three, why aren't we? Did those funds get thrown back in discretionary or general?
My guess is, is it at some point?
Never got, it just never got budgeted for.
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I, that, I have no idea, but I thought it was shocking when I read this.
And, and it says, not only is there three, but all deputy sheriffs covered by this agreement shall work a full-time regular schedule within the village accordance with the sheriff's standard work period, meaning that you have three full-time officers that you would assume would be staggered, that you wouldn't want two officers at the same time, right? You could probably, in this village, have one officer for forty hours, and what did they say? He said that to do true full-time coverage.
Five.
Five officers would be required, meaning covering twenty-four hours for seven days a week. You'd need five officers to do that. Here, they're saying, back in two thousand nine, they're providing, the sheriff agrees to station three sheriffs within the municipal limits of the Village of Marvin. All sheriffs shall cover, shall work a full-time regular schedule within the village accordance with the sheriff's standard work period.
And, and just, just, just for the public.
We didn't get that.
Just so the public would, would, would also assume, because someone's out there would be thinking, well, why don't we just have our own police force, whatever, law enforcement here to cover? What we're also not saying that either is, we would have to incur the cost of training, cars, the list goes on.
Dispatch, everything.
Insurance.
So I'd want us to kind of squash that, as, you know, as opposed to someone, well, let's just do this. Well, just because I have friends that run, you know, he's, he's the captain of a small town, and they have their own law enforcement, there's a lot, there's a lot of.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's where talk was from other towns to incorporate and say, hey, let's have our own, Weddington, Wesley Chapel, ourselves, maybe Mineral Springs, form a separate, and actually, you know, the funding site gets redirected, yeah, a co-op that, you know, and how many officers would that take and stuff? And then, would we be paying for, um, you know, there's more, let's, let's face it, the retail areas, the people, that Wesley Chapel's gonna get more calls to go to Target and stuff like that, to address shoplifting and stuff. So we, we get into that situation, and we're sharing, officer, we're not getting necessarily the coverage, because we don't have the actual, um.
Our Walmart, our Walmart.
Walmart is not gonna, uh, yeah.
Well, no, but I mean, the, the sheriff did say that we are gonna have more calls once the public's is done. And that will basically take over the time of our additional officer. Do you see it, Christina?
Yeah, I'm actually looking in the budgets from two thousand nine, now I'm at two thousand eleven, I'm sorry, two thousand twelve. And there was actually a double, double the amount.
I saw, I, I just saw that, two twenty there.
Yeah, which would give me the illusion that we had some point budgeted for two.
Or, or maybe back then, they weren't as expensive, so it was like, maybe seventy thousand each, or sixty-five each.
So we carried that, and then the question would be, did we carry that cost forward?
And, well, we've been carrying it forward since two thousand twelve, I'm trying to find out where, where that stopped.
It's just the money we have budgeted didn't, didn't get us as many officers, you know, I mean.
Well, that's it, because it got more expensive.
They're highly trained. We have, we have double-oh-ten's now.
No, the, so, we're the three agreements, it's still their agreement to have it, and it's like, you know.
But, but it also, no, but it also says on the neck, on page three at the top, that we will pay for three. So we need to, we need to, this, this contract absolutely needs to be updated. But going back to adding changes, as Christina's continuing to look for that, I think in number two, and to Joe's point about when our officer is full-time on, like, and gets pulled away, we need to have some sort of reimbursement, credit, something to the village, um.
Okay, something happened in this.
And only if we happen to have an officer on duty and he gets called away. So I'm sure that has to be documented, he's on duty, he gets called away.
And it's like for a significant amount of time, if it's like half an hour, like, I get it, but if it's for like.
I don't think there's anything an officer does that's gonna half an hour. It, it, because they gotta file reports and stuff like that, that, it does take a lot of time.
So, and, and just for the record, um, I have spoken with the off-duty supervisor, Jay Schuler, and he assures me that if they are called off for any reason on off-duty, this is just for off-duty, this is not the contract, that he does reimburse that internally.
Perfect.
Now, now, not with the contract itself, like, the regular contracted officer.
But this is like the guys on the corner directing traffic, this is not for our deputy.
So, so, he, when you say reimbursed, we pay them, because I, I remember I used to write checks and sign checks for those individual officers.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a reimbursement, it's just like, if, if they, if they get called off for an hour, he only charges for two. He, he figures that out internally. It happens so far and few between that he's able to.
Did you hear that?
To do it. So just, um.
Did you hear what she said?
No, sorry. Fifty percent, fifty percent. Sorry, I'm sorry, I got, I, I realized my phone was on, and I, I had to shut it off.
I know, but this is one thing that you always talk about, so I wanna make sure you hear it. If they're gone for an hour on the corner.
Right.
And normally, we get charged for three, and they're gone for one, they, we only get charged for two. So it's not like we get reimbursed, he just doesn't charge us for the time that they're gone.
I just remember writing checks, and it's always been for the full amount. I never remember writing checks for, for the officers I write checks for, it's for the, always for the full amount. So I never see a credit, uh, you know, when I, when I was responsible for writing, signing, the second person signing the check, it was to those officers. I don't ever remember seeing any, any, when you look at the bill or whatever, if you compare with writing the check to the bill.
It may be like two times that they've worked, and so, like, you know.
That's fine, as long as it's being addressed.
I don't think they get, get to the accounting portion, because that's gonna be more work on them. It's just like, if I work ten hours today, I might work, you know, six tomorrow, because I'm taking those two different out. So just something I think they do internally. But as you, as you guys were sitting here talking, I was looking through, um, the budget ordinances over the last several years, starting with two thousand nine, and if you look here at the screen, you'll see public safety was at two oh nine.
So I bet in oh nine, like, stuff was probably seven, sixty-five, seventy thousand, so that would be three.
Well, come to two thousand thirteen, fourteen, it bumps down to seventy. If you do seventy times three, that's right at the two hundred and, so I think at one point, we did have three.
Or we were paid for three.
Um, I don't know what happened, I would have to go back and look at the minutes.
I bet you, Nick would, no, I'll give him a call, he'd probably remember.
Well, and Christine's the one that actually, Chris is the one that, Robertson is the one that signed this contract as our finance director, so she may have some insight into it too.
So this, this, what we're looking at right here is the thirteen, fourteen budget. And if you'll notice, down here in public safety, it's seventy, you see that number, seventy-seven for deputy? So that, that was the cost of one officer in that year, and you, you have to configure that it was gonna be a little bit less in previous years. So that's, that should have been three officers.
And I could see past council looking at this town and saying, you know, I mean, crime, why do we have three officers?
I, I know that, I mean, um, who was our, who was our deputy?
Ed?
Ed. When, I know when Ed was here, and he first met some previous council members, he was like, why do we even need a deputy? Why do we even need one? So I am sure that that was the year that they knocked it down from three to one.
We can go back and look at the minutes and see if we can find anything out, and if you can reach out to Nick, um.
Yeah.
I mean, I would just like to know, because in our contract, it absolutely says three.
And that we would pay for three.
And that we would pay for three, so.
Yeah, so, uh, it, let's get to the point and say, we need to demand, uh, with the sheriff's department, going forward, a new contract, because this is written from two thousand nine.
Oh, yeah.
We're eleven years later, and we, we just need to clean it up.
Yeah.
Well, but going back to the original conversation, should we not be also simultaneously working with Wesley Chapel and Weddington?
Absolutely.
Yeah, but, but we need to update this, because this automatically renews ninety days prior to the end of the contract, correct?
It, it's just that we're at a ninety-day pause right now, so any party can terminate at ninety days.
Oh, ninety days.
And, and I think the balance of where we come to some sort of agreement, that I think we all agree that we can add, we should add one more, and maybe the tax increases warrants that, and, and that pays for that. Plus, if we initially had three back in two thousand nine, that extra part-time person is shared, so we actually have two and a half, or two and a third, or whatever it is. So we're, we're budgeting for definitely, I think we need to budget, or consensus on that, or need to budget for another full-time, put that into the budget, um, and then move forward with our conversations. And if it, if it happens, it happens, if it doesn't, we still have another officer, but.
And we're still moving forward.
And, and I, I think, I, I think we can weather in a general fund, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we can weather in a general fund, say, if we finally get this to happen in September or October, that we are now part-time, we can probably pull that si- from a safety from general fund until we get to the next year's budget, and then we, we add that.
For a half, not, not for full.
Yes, 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 yes.
Let me make sure I'm understanding correctly, just so I can proceed. Is there a consensus that we wanna add one additional officer at the beginning of this fiscal year, and have an associated tax increase for that officer to, to offset the, the total cost? Is that the consensus?
That would be mine, that would be mine.
I will say that out loud, yes.
Yes.
Bob?
I agree.
And, and I would too, which basically, it's through the survey, we got that, and then the people clearly said that they would accept a tax increase for that, so, just so you know, that, that, that gets reported as a twenty-five percent increase in taxes, which goes from five cents to.
Into the news.
Six cents, into the news, and for those who want to, uh, just, but, but it was clearly said that they, everybody, and the fact that we are, we actually, somehow, in two thousand nine, we went from three to one. we actually somehow in two thousand nine, we went from three to one and, uh.
Two thousand and thirteen is when it dropped down to one.
Two thousand and thirteen, okay, yes.
Per, per the, per, per the budget lines, yeah.
We will, uh, adjust the budget accordingly. And if, you know, the roughly, again, it's one cent. It could be a little slightly less than one cent, could be a little slightly more than one cent. So we will make that tax increase reflective of whatever that proportion it is with that agreement. Um, second question, or not really question, but comment that I would have is the, the, the thought process behind this collaborative district per se is that we basically have a cost sharing program that makes the lesser impact to our taxpaying citizens with this, the way we're going to work it out. So it could potentially mean that we get three officers for the same price we're getting two. Um, so there may not necessarily be an increase associated with the new, um, the new way y'all are thinking of doing this contract.
If we can work it out.
If you can work it out.
With other municipalities, not this contract with the county.
Yes. And if, if there is an increase, let's say it's twenty thousand dollar increase for having a third officer. I don't know what it is going to be, but we would just take that out of fund balance. And then over the next fiscal year, we would figure out how we were going to pay for that. Yep.
Okay. And then, so in this contract, I would like to work in somewhere that says if our full-time deputies are gone for a significant amount of time, that we are credited for that time.
I, I wouldn't even use the language of significant amount of time, just, yeah, if they're gone at all. Because any, any call that they have to make, and you could probably confirm this through your friend, is there's a report that goes along with that and stuff. And that, just driving over there and the report is going to be two to three hours, period. Anything, anytime they're called away, that has to be accounted for.
And then I think, so that's one place that I would like to see some added language. And then I would also like to see where we can direct them in terms of where our, where we feel our highest needs are, that they can, that we can direct them to pay a little bit more attention there and that we can work out their schedules.
I had a general note on, uh, number, bullet point number four on page two to authorize, have authorization for activities based on community needs.
There you go. Something like that. Community needs and, and hours or something like that.
So we'll get that addressed. And in the meantime.
And if the sheriff come back and says, no, we are not interested in changing the contract, what are our options?
Well, do y'all want me to negotiate this before you talk with these other two? Because I, I think the premise is the other two, we come on board and say, this is what we want. All three of us want this in our contract. So I think we should probably wait until y'all talk with Weddington and Waxaw or, um, Wesley Chapel. We all come to the table with the same agreement. This is what we want.
Oh, you don't think we should change, try to change the contract now?
I, I would, I would like to see if they're open to changing the contract and stuff. I mean, I think, yes, absolutely. I mean.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that then.
Did the sheriff say he has control of that or is that the county, county? Well, the county has the pricing control. He has the language control, I think. Because it's his department. Yeah.
So only because I don't want to wait for Weddington, Wesley Chapel, whoever, whoever it is.
And do we get Chaplain involved?
Because they're next door.
We have not at this point in time.
So do we get Chaplain involved in this contract? Cause I'm, I'm.
In this one?
Absolutely. I mean, he's going to act in our, he's going to act in our best interest. I mean.
You can run a by before you.
I would think so, but, you know, he looks at the existing one and then the new one that we have, if he makes any recommendations. I think it makes sense that we have somebody from a legal standpoint.
Sure, because I'm sure nobody's repeated in a while.
Covering our.
And our financial policy says that he reviews our contracts anyway. So we'll, we'll get it before it's executed.
But, but again, because, and I keep using those municipalities that are physically closest to us, whoever we want to talk to about this, um, shared services. But I don't know that, that we're going to get them on board. I hope we do. I, I mean, I think that's something to strive for. But we need to take care of our own contract in the meantime.
Yes, and it's two different things, I think. Because I think this shared services, as this comes to fruition, that it's a separate contract anyways.
Yeah.
So it's similar in ways, but it's a separate contract.
But it, but it may be only a contract among the municipalities. We may, we may say, we'll keep our two, you keep your three, and we'll work it out amongst ourselves.
Yeah, from an accounting standpoint, I, I could see them, the sheriff's department billing one municipality and then that municipality charges the other one. And we, we, you know, work it out that way. Okay.
Jamie, Bob, you guys good with that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Now, do you need a, a motion to rescind, uh, the officers that we have now for traffic control until further notice?
No, we just, we can, we're all in agreement, um, to direct Christina to do that. So we're good.
Okay.
She's going to let them know and then we're going to give, we probably should make a motion to give her authority to reinstate it when it's time to, to say work, work normal, sort of the new normal is back and we have school and traffic. And we did already agree to have it for year round. Instead of having a go to a meeting, all of a sudden we start seeing contract. A simple phone call could be like, hey, we're starting to see a lot of backups. Christina could easily, do we need a motion for that?
I think we're good. We'll just.
Do you need us to consent that we give it to Christina for valid authority? I don't.
Okay, that's fine.
Bob, you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right, um, moving forward, discussion of additional council seats slash referendum.
This was a carryover from the last agenda, um.
I think we just need to carry it over again.
Do y'all want me to add it to the next work session or regular?
Which will be May.
Okay.
And I think that's fine. Only because I think we need to get through next meeting before we start talking about what we're doing here.
So we're moving that, we're going to table that, move it to May work session?
Yeah, because we won't have a work session in April.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I didn't see anything in my packet regarding the initial agenda item. And then I thought, okay. I, so I'll back, go back.
All right. Next up, we have review of council meeting minutes for two eleven twenty and two twenty seven twenty.
Okay. I only, I think I only had like one or maybe two changes, but the first one, Christina is under B.
Yep.
Number three, Deputy E.
Got it. Is it, oh, it's, oh, yeah.
Is that when?
Barbie, I'm going ahead and saving the changes in your.
Which one are they on?
Two eleven.
Which one on number three, which one?
B three, but I've got it changed. You don't need to do anything. I've got it.
Okay. That was it for two eleven.
Okay.
Bob, do you have anything for two eleven? Any changes?
I do not.
And I didn't have anything for two twenty seven. I'm sorry, anything for two eleven?
No.
I don't have anything.
Right, Mr. Mayor?
I do not. I'm looking at adjournments. Okay, so that was two twenty seven. I didn't, I didn't have anything notes, noteworthy that that's on. I guess we can move that to the consent agenda.
Yep. So we need a motion to, um. Advance the amended minutes from two eleven and two twenty seven to the April seventh consent agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just one, I just realized I saw the very, it's the verbiage we have. Not that it's a big deal, but it's Marvin Ridge, Keller Guard, one first place, four cadets and four high schools. So there's two different cadets and high school, two, two different first places. That's the only thing.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Thanks Barbie. That's okay.
Sorry, I didn't understand that.
That's all right.
Back up, right. Stop, council comments?
No.
Right there.
Right.
First place, four cadets.
And for high school. For, and instead of place in cadets.
Yeah, I got it.
Four cadets and for high school. So there's two separate teams there, so.
Okay.
I got it.
No, place for cadets, four.
Tag on it, I can't tag.
It's hard to do that, isn't it Christina?
Okay, great. Thank you.
So now I'll make a motion to move the amended minutes for two eleven, twenty twenty and two twenty seven, twenty twenty to the April seventh, twenty twenty, uh, consent agenda.
Further, just, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Give me a chance to do my job.
Love it, Bobby. We're out, buddy. Talked about, buddy.
Okay, um, discussion, next up, we have discussion of contract renewal with Kinetic, formerly Windstream. They're upgrading, they all works.
So, uh, before Barbie.
Phone system.
Comes into play on this, I'll just let you know that there's really not, not a whole lot of costs associated with this increase. It's dramatically needed because we have a lot of issues internally. However, it is a three-year contract. So I did want her to present it to you all to make sure you were okay with the three-year contract.
I'm fine with it.
Any other comments Barbie that you would have?
No, actually, what's, um, what, what I put in the memo pretty much, um, explains what the contract is. There is a seventy-three dollar increase per month for the new. And what they're doing is, is there, we've already got fiber installed into the village. And so what they're going to do is move, um, the phones and our internet from the switch box connection and the cables over to the fiber. And in order for them to do that, we were trying to utilize that function without having to go into a contract. But we can't do it. So, um, our only option is to go into a three-year contract um, in order to utilize the, um, one hundred M D, uh, fiber to get us off of the, uh, three M D tier one.
So Barbie, what, Barbie, what happens when we move?
What happens when we move is we'll have a faster internet and, um, our phone systems will work, uh, much more efficiently than what they do.
Now, what happens when we move buildings?
In terms of the contract, the three-year contract.
In terms of the contract, the contract will move with the building. I've already talked with the, um, with the sales guy and gave him the, the heads up on the, the possible move. And he said that all of that would, they would come out and move everything over, um, to the new building.
Perfect. Is there going to be a cost associated with moving all the stuff to the new building?
He assured me that they were not going to, um, charge us for anything because, um, we've been a long-term customer, but we've also gotten bad service with them.
Okay, so.
And we've expressed that, so.
Okay, so, so regardless of where we pick, they'll move it regardless with no cost?
Yes.
Okay.
And the only thing I would say is if somehow when we look at that new contract, if we can see where that says that because we're saying that now, but then come through two years from now, we're moving in or a year from now.
It's a different sales guy and.
Yeah.
Just make sure we look at that part of the contract and get Chaplain to fully review it.
Yes. And, um, what, what, what we have done for this particular, and I can get him to do it, uh, with, um, with, with moving is he has given us through an email, um, language that, um, freezes waves any, um, other fees that, that is associated with this contract. And I can, um, negotiate him to, uh, to do it for when we move to the new building.
Great.
So we're adding another nine hundred dollars a year to this particular.
We'll find it somewhere in the budget. We'll find it.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just make sure it's in the contract because I don't want to be hit with like a, you know, five thousand dollar fee for moving and everything or whatever it is. Not fee, but you know, cost of, you know, run new whatever and all that stuff.
Okay.
Okay. I'm good with it.
We'll put it on the consent agenda Barbie.
Okay.
The contract, when we get it.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else? Thank you Barbie. Thank you Barbie. Next up, we have discussion of street signage replacements planned for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
So a couple of months ago, we went through our spec manual and y'all saw the new signage that had the nice logo at the end of our street blades, our street sign blades. Um, and what we've done since is we've kind of estimated how much it would cost to go ahead and make all those street blade replacements for all the, the roads that we have in, in our jurisdiction now, in our, in our purview that are not DOT roads. So there's a nice little table that's inside your packet that shows you the total cost. And in the meantime, I've reached out to some of the HOAs to see if they were interested in helping us to, um, to pay for some of these signs. Um, only with the premise of knowing that we have not budgeted any funds for it. So if we can get some help from some of the HOAs, it would be able to, we would be able to implement more of those replacements faster.
Yeah.
I did get a call from an HOA yesterday that, um, um, apparently had read the memo and kind of assumed that there was some pushback for some, from some HOAs that we've now changed from us. I, I've never asked for a hundred percent. I've asked for a, some proportionate level of, um, participation and trying to figure out how to do it equitably. Um, if Firethorn has twenty-five signs and, um, Marvin Creek has three, you know, how do we differentiate between doing Marvin Creek versus Firethorn? So my premise was if Firethorn is willing to contribute fifty percent, then we would implement that neighborhood first. Whereas if Marvin Creek wasn't interested in zero, we would not do them. So I don't really know how y'all want to do it in terms of priority. My only thought was if we can get some input from HOAs, we would do those first.
So what did the person say?
I told, I assured them that there was no pushback. It was just we were trying to figure out a way to prioritize those.
Oh, so they were interested. They thought it was terrible that there was pushback possibly from other HOAs.
They were just wondering why. And I said, so there, there's no push, there's been no pushback whatsoever.
So they're on board with fifty percent?
Yes.
Perfect. Which, which neighborhood is that?
Um, I think it was Providence, Providence Road, I think.
Awesome.
Or maybe it was Oak Brook. I can't remember. I have to look back at the emails. But I have not heard back from, from all the HOAs.
Do all of these neighbors have HOAs? Bob, do you guys have an HOA?
They do not.
No.
Repeat that again.
Do you guys have a homeowners association?
No.
Okay. Can you, can you gather up twenty-two, twenty-six from all your neighbors for your street sign?
Sure.
Yeah, because you have one sign, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to John Jones.
Yeah. Now, the only question I have is I, I think we have approved what the sign is going to look like, correct?
It's in your spec manual, correct?
DOT and I remember when we, remember Jamie, we had the original signs that we changed at Firethorn. Um, there was a cap on the top of each post that was for more of, um, the emergency response for, is that required in this? Because at the top of the post, forget about the sign. We're not replacing the post, I assume. We're just replacing the signs.
Just the blade.
Yep.
But on top, wasn't there a requirement of a certain road number?
You had to have a number as opposed to a name.
And is it still there?
The block numbers, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that is a requirement.
Okay, so, but, but not, not the block numbers on the sign. I'm talking on the top of the post. There is a designated, is like a one, five dash three oh two, whatever number, small number it was on the top of that post.
What is that?
That's state road. Does it say SR one, that's our phone system.
Oh, I'm like, what is, I'm sorry.
It, it's probably the state road.
It is a state road, yes.
If it's a DOT road, all DOT roads have a number. So the SR means state road and that number is associated with their state road.
And so as we're converting, then just to be clear, from a state road to, and Marvin realized we are not requiring that because that's not in our road.
No. The block numbers are different. That's the block number that's associated with your block.
Yeah, and that's going to be on the sign. But it's a state road number that we had to.
But we can put our logo on Marvin Newtown as long as we have those numbers on there too, correct?
That's something that we'll have to work out with DOT. And I don't, I don't, I have not got to that point yet because if you notice in this chart, DOT is pretty expensive. It's sixty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So that was going to be my last, my last one to do.
Okay.
Um, but I, I think the answer is yes, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. I would say for this, we reach out to all the HOAs, find out who is interested in cost sharing and those are the neighborhoods we do first.
And, and that was what I was thinking.
Well, we don't do them until we, the roads get done.
These are the roads in our system.
Oh, I know, but, uh, uh, okay, they're in our system. Okay.
I mean, Firethorn hasn't been accepted yet, but.
Right.
But if they're willing to pay, like, if they're willing to pony up, then these are the ones that we've paved and are in our system.
Yes, and we'll have to, we'll have to figure a way to do this, like moving forward, because, uh, for instance, Tullamore is not in here. I'm sorry, Tullamore is, um.
Preserve is not in there yet.
Innisbrook is not in there.
Yeah, but you haven't done Innisbrook yet.
Exactly. At some point, we'll still have to do that. So we'll still have to come back and figure out. So we'll, we'll have to continually, continually do this. This is just kind of where we draw the line in the sand right now.
Why is Preserve not on here yet? Because they're still in their building and they haven't turned them over yet?
Correct, yes. Same with Innisbrook.
But you've reached out, you're saying you've talked to every one of these HOAs?
No, she's not. She's reached out.
Yeah, I've talked to mostly all of them.
You have?
Most, mostly every single one.
And people are waiting for their readings to.
Um, most of them have been receptive to providing input. And I actually initially just told them the initial estimated cost of total. Um, but I figured at some point, people are going to say, no, we're not interested. So I've had to figure out a way to prioritize who we're going to do first.
I'd say if you want to pony up all, we'll do you first.
It's usually how they get things done.
Okay. All right. You good with that?
And we're going to put this in next year's budget, just so y'all know. So it won't be done until next year. Next, it's first July first.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't see much.
Nice job on that. All right, um, next up, we have discussion of NCDOT supplemental agreement for a third roundabout.
Didn't we agree to this?
You did, you did. I'm just letting y'all know. I'm just letting y'all know and just to make it cleaner, um if y'all could just motion to approve the agreement, y'all have already done it in a meeting before, but you didn't actually see the agreement in your hands.
I think we have to do it or otherwise it's gonna get kicked to the back of the line, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I've put all the documentation in there that shows you the numbers reflect.
So do you need a motion to, oh, because Joe's gotta sign up for thirty days, doesn't he?
Yes, and yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the NC DOT supplemental agreement for the third roundabout as presented.
Further discussion? All's in fa- all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so Joe, you can get that signed and Christina, you can get that back to her.
Yes.
Whoever.
And we're still waiting for our check back too, by the way, so we'll look at that soon.
Checks in the mail.
Checks in the mail. Keep looking for it.
All right, because next up, we have discussion of website committee proposed appointments. Barbie?
You there Barbie?
Okay, yeah, I'm here. If you'll see on the memo that I provided, I have been able to get four committee members. Um, and uh the committee is proposed appointments is based on in compliance with rule forty-one of your rules procedure for appointments. Um, so now I just need you all to approve the the members. Um, I have um, I had applications from Bob Minnencamp and uh the, I'm not sure how to pronounce this person's name, Joy Dip. And we do have one from Christina, but I don't have one from Leigh Anne Block. Um, I just had an interest from her.
Okay, Barbie, just just to note, I'm not sure what our conflict of interest policy states in terms of subcommittees, but just make sure they get that statement of economic interest in before if if our policy states that they have to have that. I'm I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, most definitely. The committee hasn't, we haven't even set a date for that.
Okay.
Um, we're just in the early stages of getting the committee approved. So once, once you're good with the list, then I'll go ahead and send those um documents to each person.
I'm fine. You're fine, I'm good. You're gonna be running it, so.
Uh, do we need a motion for that?
You're just gonna put it on the consent or what do you, because you you didn't ask for the, you just asked for discussion. Can you just put it on the consent for next meeting?
I can put it on the consent and um at that time, we'll go ahead and um uh start the um the ball rolling for the the um conflict of interest stuff.
Okay.
Thanks Barbie.
You're welcome.
Give me one second here, I'm just making some notes. Okay, um, thank you for that. All right, next up, we have a uh discussion voluntary annexation plan. Rohit?
All right, um, so this is mostly a discussion for you guys because, you know, after a lot of looking, it doesn't appear to, we don't appear to have a actual like plan or procedure to get the areas that we intended maybe back in the early two thousands to have within Marvin. We don't actually have a plan or procedure and uh now it's a little more difficult because uh the state requires voluntary annexation, which means that the government, the municipalities can't just go around and select this whole neighborhood or anything to say, okay, this is in Marvin now like they used to do back um maybe over ten years ago. So um this item is just for, you know, a discussion of what is the intent for annexing, you know, whole neighborhoods and and little donut holes in Marvin like uh impact area. In the uh agenda packet, there's a map. This may be just the start of the discussion, but we have an annexation agreement with neighboring municipalities that we would not annex uh outside of this red line. Um, but it is, it is a pretty big area and uh a lot of it is not in Marvin right now, so uh for example, Ladera, which just got built, I got called from their HOA saying, hey, we would like to join Marvin. And, you know, I had to tell them, that would be great, but you have to get every individual homeowner to agree to it. And then the HOA uh was like, hmm, that sounds hard. And then I haven't heard from them since.
Well.
Well, can't we help them do that?
We absolutely could and that's part of this, how is the part of this discussion today?
Um, I thought we could take them by block. I mean, they can, they, it's voluntary, but we can do it as they're contiguous. Like, you could take a, maybe a grouping of six or eight homes on that street that turns into Ladera, for instance, and um if they all agree, even they're all contin- is the word contiguous?
Yeah.
Um, then they they basically volunteer to become a part of Marvin. So you could potentially have, the tricky thing comes in and where you tell them is going forward, if we're gonna take over their streets, if they don't have a gate and we're gonna take over their streets, the tricky thing comes in is if, when it's time to get their streets done, because we offer that as a service and that would come under our um, if we'd have, we'd have the situation like we had at Weddington Chase where um there were some outliers there that we weren't, we 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 would have to have the HOA act and say, okay, I guess they put sort of like a lien on their house or is that what they did with, how was the HOA handling that? Are they just paying for it? For the homes?
Just billing, they're billing the proportion of the street frontage to the homeowner.
But you could do an assessment. You could do an assessment too, though.
An assessment where the HOA could do an assessment, not us?
No, we couldn't, we couldn't.
Okay.
Okay, so let me ask a question because I I feel like this is two totally separate subjects. I feel like what is in our agenda packet is a contract between the municipalities that we won't step on each other's toes and then we're talking about bringing in individual neighborhoods. So.
Well, what's in the agenda is is just a foundation to say, this is what we have so far and it's all, all it's saying is that we are interested in eventually annexing most, if not all, of the area within this red boundary, but that is the limits of what we can annex. So how do we get to that point? We don't really have a plan.
He's just showing you kind of where where our open areas are. So if you look at the the map, any areas that you see in white that don't reach the red line are kind of areas of discussion. Does that make sense?
So help me out with this.
Like, right here, if you look at the map, like, this area right here would be open for discussion. This area right here would be open for discussion. These areas.
And this, this is a map that was, this is an agreement that was made in the early two thousands. So we've since annexed neighborhoods like Providence.
But this isn't Marvin.
Sedgefield.
Right, right. The the green is Marvin. I'm sorry, no, 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 no.
No, no, no. This isn't Marvin though, in here. Between here and here, this is not Marvin. That's, that's, I think, Hunter Oaks.
No, you're right, you're right.
So Hunter Oaks is not Marvin, but that's included in that red borderline.
Right, right. That was at a time we, well, Marvin had thought of we would annex that area at some point.
Yeah, I still understand why we have this contract with Wesley Chapel and Weddington in the package.
It's just so that, you know, in perpetuity, if we're interested or they're interested in annexing anything, this is kind of our limits of what we would ever annex.
Okay, so have we entered into this contract in the past? Because there's a date on the last page before on the signatures that says nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't find the uh the actual executed contract by the time of this uh this put in the meeting, but we have this contract. It is, it is a contract that we follow.
You can't see the Marvin yellow area. If you look at that map up there, you can kind of tell. But I think he was trying to show you, like, there's certain areas in here that are yellow. For some reason, Rohit, you can't see the yellow in the agenda packet. So we don't, we don't really know where the, we don't know where the uh areas of discussion are.
Yeah, um, so I guess you just have to look at, there is another map in the agenda packet back in the uh streetlight discussion. I put a map of the current Marvin limits, so you could probably look at those.
Where's this map at?
Okay, but is, but is this an executed contract that we have?
Yes, yes, this is a contract that we already have. I just couldn't find the actual executed.
Oh, so you're not asking us to go, to enter into a new contract?
No, 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 we're not, we already have this contract and it's like twenty years old, so.
Gosh.
This is a contract we already have.
It's kind of like, is that similar to one we have with Mecklenburg that we have obtained an agreement?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah, it's just with the other towns.
Okay, I was very, because that was, that was.
Okay.
I I think we're just trying to isolate the areas in which y'all are interested in in talking to first. And what we can do at that point is try to put together a package to say, hey, this is why we, this is why we invite you to be a part of it.
Okay, see, I thought we were trying to figure out if we wanted to go to Wesley Chapel, Weddington and have that. Okay, that's why.
No, no, we've executed this contract, I think, over twenty years ago.
Thank you.
This is already established.
All right.
This is already established and now we, uh, the discussion came up that, you know, we've been sitting on little pockets of areas that we really should have within Marvin. How do we get to the point where we actually do annex areas within our, you know.
Okay, I got it, okay. Yeah, yeah, I got it, okay. I mean, for me, like, I think you just kind of start from like wherever our borders are and just trying to like, you know, cut like, screech, I mean, clearly Providence down south, Providence Downs, Kingsmead. I mean, I'd love to have a Hunter Oaks in. I mean, I know they came to us at one point and. I I don't, I mean, I I know it was because the median house, like, price of the house wasn't very high and their stuff wasn't something.
We can work on kind of a a package and and, you know, put something nice together to invite, to send out to all the property owners and invite them to be a part of us and if y'all want us to start working on that and.
I absolutely think that's a great idea. And I feel like um John Bericich may have some information because I feel like Park Trek and Greenway were trying to put together some sort of pamphlet about, like, some of the pros coming into Marvin's and he may be a really good person to reach out to because he is a, I mean, he's got more notebooks.
I, I, yeah, I I actually wrote, started a letter and wrote a letter. I'll have to dig that up and see what. Because I was trying to put exactly that, a letter to these, and and I would initially like to focus on.
Eight to ten pages?
No, but it's long. No, but it's, it's, it's more, and I can condense it down to a bullet point, but that was more my argument of why you would want to be Marvin, but it comes down to what kind of services are we gonna provide. I think our first steps before we go outside our borders is closing up the donut holes and focus on the, on those areas such as Ladera, which is right in the heart, such as Providence Down, which is right in the heart. As we.
But if you look at this map, like, it's, I mean, if you go and you're kind of going along this border, it's, I mean, this whole, I mean, it's all this in here.
Well, that, that, that's, that's the unincorporated area and the chimneys are involved in that because that would be considered kind of a donut hole, but.
Yeah, but all this in here for sure.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, all of it where it it makes sense if you're driving on a road where there's a definite, you know, okay, we're out of Marvin now and stuff.
But I mean, like Providence Downs, there's three streets in Providence Downs that are in Marvin and the rest is not, like, that's insane.
Well, the reason why is because in the middle of the building.
No, I know, I know.
It became, you know, they, the developers said, oh, we don't have to pay that tax and we're out of it. That's what happened in Weddington Chase. So that's one of the, uh, the uh the fallouts of uh the state legislature incorporating that. But I I think we, instead of expanding, because if you look at it right now, that would be expanding and we go into Hunter Oaks, whereas our existing border is. But if you go within our town limits right now and how it looks and if you were to look at some streets that would create that barrier, there are clearly donut holes that I think we focus on first.
So this whole area is a donut hole.
What we can do at at a staff level is come up with, you know, a nice little package and then we can identify parcels to implement first. We can bring it back at the next work session, make sure y'all are okay with it and then we'll send it out to those property owners.
I mean, I think it's great. And I think Rohit, I think if they're like, ooh, that sounds like a lot of work, let them know that we're here to help facilitate that. We can come, we can come to a meeting, we can talk to individual homeowners for them, like, whatever they want.
Sure. So I guess if uh we're kind of closing up this discussion, I just want to recap, you know, we're taking, like, I, what I've heard are really good ideas. You know, we start from where we have the donut holes. I'm hearing, you know, chimneys, Providence down south, you know, like, I guess we will start with areas that are kind of between us and our park.
Gates of Angely, Reserve.
Right, so we can close that gap between, let's say, our park and the boundaries and then start expanding outward. So we have like a schedule of where we want to start. And then we also create, uh, the, one of the first things that Mr. Mayor said was, uh, you know, what services do we offer? So create kind of a, you know, an advertisement type package where uh we can convince, you know, hey, we have trails, we have the park, we uh reservice roads, you know, this is why it should be in Marvin. And then we start, um, we start block by block because that would make it a little easier to digest than neighborhood by neighborhood, but still have like a schedule of um how we want to address.
And to your point about the, you know, including the park and stuff, we have a situation where right across the street from the park is a huge development that is unincorporated. You can, I can't, don't know the name off the top of my head. What is it?
Oldenburg.
Yeah, that's it.
Oldenburg, yes. I mean, that that would be a prime candidate to, you know, closing up the donut hole because they're, by, by all means, they're, they're gonna find a way and they're gonna probably want to create a saf- safe passageway to get over to that park because that, that makes sense for them to use it and it's uh, it's right there and uh, um, but, you know, yes, I agree with everything you're saying.
Can I, and I, I just want to ask one question real fast. Um, I had this discussion with um Derek the other day. Is the cancel amenable to potentially revising our fees associated with parking passes and barn rentals to out-of-jurisdiction residents substantially increase that amount to influence people to come into the town to have a discounted rate for those? We haven't, we haven't revised our rates since twenty fourteen, if I can remember correctly, and I'm trying to pull it up right now. Um, there's, you know, I was just trying to think of ways to entice people to come in and if, you know, if we can have an exclusive venue for people to have events and that sort of thing where in-town residents get a better rate than out-of-town residents. And they do now, but it's just, it's not, it's not a substantial difference.
Well, I think that we gotta be careful there because obviously, you know, the rates are what they are and I don't know if we haven't, that's not on the agenda, but it it is part of becoming what you get for that. And I think if um we I think loo- I think looking at, at some point, that's gonna be a discussion of how we, or as we continue, what rates residents get, what rates. I think that's what we, we don't entice them with that. I think we, we say, hey, right now, if you wanted to use our park, here's your rate. If you're in this donut hole, this is your rate. And 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 that has to be a significant difference, so there's an advantage to it because I think they look at that as if they're gonna become part of Marvin and pay five cents on their property tax. Oh, I just, if I'm gonna have an event over there, it's a lot less expensive for me to just pay that fee rather than pay an ongoing, you know, rate. I mean, you you just, you you want that to be clear. So I don't know if we get into that quite yet.
Okay.
But I think we, we could put on a future agendas review. I think we do that every year anyways, review uh or every other year.
You might, but they haven't been changed in quite some time. I I think it's been at least six years.
The fees?
Uh, Barbie, can you correct me?
I think the fees have been changed.
Trying to find the fee schedule online. Uh, Barbie? Are you there?
The fees have been updated uh most recently.
Where, where's the fee schedule at in the V drive?
Uh, it should be under office. Um, under general.
I got it, okay, I got it, two thousand eighteen.
And then fee schedule. So it, the last time it was done in October the tenth, twenty eighteen. Uh, however, I'm not really sure that the park fees um were changed significantly. Um.
But we do address that every other year or every, when things come up, we look at the amount of income we've uh gotten from weddings, the little whatever we were doing over there. We've, we've made adjustments, but I don't, I think there's a cer- certain amount of, uh, you know, if you're part of Marvin, you get this. If you're a Boy Scout troop, uh, you got.
But technically, you should address your fee schedule um each time you do the budget. Um, so that uh, so, so funding that that you put in the potential budget reflects what type of fee schedule that you have.
We'll look at this at the, at the next work session too.
Yeah, I just think it should be significant amount that, you know, you're gonna use that, you know, because I think by default, that neighborhood right across the street from the park, it makes sense because our park's in the middle of, where it's very difficult to access at all from most people that live in Marvin. They have to drive there.
Well, and and also, like, if you take. Well, and, and also, like, if you take into consideration, a $500,000 assessed property is roughly $250, so, you know, if you bump, and I'm just hypothetically saying this number here, this non-Marvin number, if you bump it up 100 bucks, i- if somebody has one event per year, it pays for itself to be in Marvin.
Right, if that individual homeowner.
Correct, yeah, so you're just, just trying to, trying to think of ways...
It's other advantages, and it goes back to, can we provide a, um, and, and we really seriously have to look at this, because if we're taking over roads, is having that one, uh, garbage company that's going to service that neighborhood, and we're not, you know, we're, we're not opposed to multiple contracts, but as long as those multiple contracts are designated for, because there may not be one company that can handle all of Marvin, but that one contract, um, you, you're not getting multiple trucks on the roads, we're limiting it to one time that truck comes through the neighborhood per week for garbage pickup and stuff, but that's, those are all the things that we need to kind of put in place, and for staff, I will, um, I will look into that, I know I wrote that letter as about four, five years ago, that was one of my big things of why I couldn't understand how Marvin was, what it was, but it became a kind of a reason why you would want to be Marvin, that was way back then, I think there's a lot more benefits now, so. Um, but I'll, I'll try and dig up that letter for you guys as a starting point.
I think we have the direction we need to proceed on our end.
Okay. All right, um, we good there, everyone?
I'm good.
Good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Next up is, uh, discussion of Village Center district renderings.
Okay, so, the idea behind this is that, um, the planning board has come to a point where we have about maybe a 50%, 75% design on the zoning district for the Village Center, they're still going to take a few months, and I think will be delayed a bit, but, um, uh, at this point, I think we have enough of the foundational zoning elements to create a, uh, a set of renderings that will be helpful in showing, uh, the public and the property owners, and you also, the council and mayor, how this, uh, Village Center would look. So, in this item, I've included some, you know, samples of rendering that I think, uh, the, you know, what I'm looking for in this type of contract, and here I'm getting your, um, I'm asking for your permission to, uh, get a contract, uh, which would be, uh, under my, uh, planning and consulting budget, which I have, um, comfortable amount of money in, um, that, uh, I could get someone to make some of these renderings based on the, uh, current, uh, zoning district idea.
And just for the record, this is totally in my purview to approve and accept, I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the board with moving forward, with expending some public dollars on design work, or just conceptual...
Yep.
Before we moved any further on that, so, if y'all are good...
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm very interested as we go forward, and before, you know, I certainly hope you don't think this is what Marvin's going to look like, but, um, I'm teasing, but, um, I'm anxious to hear the NC Main Street Conference update, and, and what you learn, and how, you know, that part of the process gets involved, is that at the very beginning, and, and who we're, who we're talking to, to, to present that, but I'm all in favor of, because a lot of people look at pictures, and that tells the story better than what we can maybe use in words here and stuff, and...
Absolutely, and I'll be giving that update in the planner's report at the end of this meeting.
Okay. And the budget...
Yeah, I'm good, you can do that, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a $1,500 budget?
$300.
300, oh, I thought, I saw.
Right, I have $2,000 left in the consultant budget, and, uh, don't really anticipate coming close to that for the rest of the fiscal year, so...
Okay.
$200 to be able to keep that comfortably in that budget.
Yep, you guys okay with that?
You're a skipper.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm good with that, and I don't know how you found something so inexpensive, being, you know, the renderings like that, somebody that's got work.
Christina's kids, Christina's kids are going to be doing the rendering for that.
It's going to be their project while they're not in class.
Okay, yeah, that'll be good.
That was supposed to be funny, Christina.
She's not listening either.
We just, we just busted her right now.
Yeah, sure, that sounds good.
We, we won't hold order kids to that, so, um, maybe my kids, so...
Jason can do it.
There you go. We're good there, so we move forward?
Yeah.
All right, next up, discussion of rules and procedure, rule number 14 changed to add open topics.
Oh, to, oh, to add open topics, yes.
It's just the, the rules of procedure, um...
Sounds good, put it on the consent agenda.
She only put that one page in there just so y'all have it, but that's what y'all had asked for.
Take it on the consent agenda.
Yeah, but there, there has to be the rules that be approved, so we'll approve that.
Yeah, and, and I apologize, um...
So it can't be on the consent agenda, because we don't see it, we don't have it.
Yeah, yeah, you will, on the next meeting.
Because I thought this project had to be done first before we added it to that.
Okay.
So, I apologize if, if I, uh, didn't add that, um, to the agenda.
I'm just saying, I don't see the rules in the packet here for us to look at and, and discuss, that's what I would think...
It's just changed, it's just changed, okay, just to say open topics.
It's just for the order of business.
Yeah, you did, you did it right, Barbie.
Barbie, yeah, you're good, Barbie.
Yeah.
Go not, you're good, Barbie.
We're good, okay, just want to make sure that there's, you know...
Yeah, and, and as you see, you wanted it on both the regular meetings and the work sessions, so you see that on both sides of your...
And, and the other thing I would say is I would encourage us to not have that, but things happen, like, we are living day-to-day right now, and we just got a, a perfect example, we just got to notice that Charlotte's on lockdown essentially, and, and that's going to change things, so I would encourage council not to use that, but if there's nothing, there's nothing, but, and, and try and get it on the agenda from a transparency, uh, standpoint, but, you know, I mean, it just, it's going to happen, so, okay. Thank you for that, Barbie, then, moving forward, a discussion of 20... Go, I'm sorry?
Did y'all do anything with this?
No, we're going to add it on the consent for April 7th.
Okay.
And next up, we have, uh, number 12, discussion of fiscal year 2021 retreat report.
And I don't know if y'all's packet had, I'm, I'm noticing in my packet, the back pages were not included.
I don't know, I don't know how many pages there should be.
Okay, it's not included in yours, and can I ask y'all to table this item?
Yeah.
Yep.
You can, it doesn't mean we're...
Table to the next, uh, May, to the, to the...
May work session?
May work session.
Or we can do April regular, it doesn't matter, whatever y'all want to do, it doesn't matter.
I mean, I'd like to, like, to go, like, talk about it, because I, because, I mean, I, I would like to, I think our mission, vision, all that stuff is a little long-winded, so I would like to make sure we've updated it to what we talked about at the retreat, and then we can give it to Barbie and her website committee, and they can...
So you want to do that in a work session?
Yeah.
So that'll, we'll table this, we'll make a mo, motion to table this to, uh, the May, um, work session?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Bob?
Bob, you good?
Press mute, unmute, hello?
Bob, are you good?
My pajamas got caught up in my microphone.
I'm here.
There you go.
We, we volunteered for a couple of committees, Bob.
Yeah.
Okay, you're good, you're good with, uh...
I'm good.
Okay.
Um, next up on 13, we have acceptance of February 2020 treasury report.
Looks good.
And I did want to note, there was a memorandum in there about the bank fees that we had to discuss.
Oh, I missed that.
Basically, in short, we've asked them, and we're just waiting to hear back, majority of the fees were what we had, what we had mentioned in the, um...
Oh, like the credit card stuff?
Yeah.
But like, still, like, monthly fees for my FICO, which I would be paying, that's crazy, balancing out.
But there's a memo in there that explains it, you can, everything looks good, y'all can approve it.
Okay. So we're waiting on that, so, nothing other to report?
No.
Okay, all right, next up, we have, uh, change location to Fellowship Hall on April 7th, 20 meeting, uh, to amend the calendar?
Yeah, we just need to amend the calendar, I'd like to make a motion to amend the, uh, Village of Marvin meeting calendar for the April 7th, 2020 budget work session and regular meeting to Fellowship Hall, uh, budget meeting starting at 5:30, regular meeting starting at 6:30.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, thank you, next up, we have rules of procedure discussion.
So what is, you haven't even looked at this, you don't board this.
This is just a defined, so we have a policy in place now for electronic participation or, um, teleconference participation, we don't actually have rules in place, rules of procedure in place for how...
We don't have a rule?
No, as far as like how the, how the voting works, um, the, the policy is very vague and generic in terms of, we allow it, but it doesn't specify exactly to the extent of what the details.
Okay, so now this one says quorum, present, in-person, or electronically shall be included, our policy does not say that, our policy says you cannot, if you're on the phone, you will not be counted as quorum, this right here says in-person or electronically.
But it's, it's, I think it's...
Before, before you can, um, participate remotely, you, there has to be a quorum presently in-person, that's by statute.
But Kim's saying...
Okay, but in this rule of procedure, what I'm looking at right now, it contradicts that, I understand what you're saying, but what this says contradicts that.
Right, but we still have to follow the North Carolina general statutes regardless on what, what our packages are in our rules of procedure.
However, for CRTPO meeting, for instance, they, given the circumstances we're facing right now...
Barbie, what's that state statute that says that, sorry, Joe?
That's all right.
I can pull it real fast, Barbie.
Hold on, I got it right here, if I can...
I mean, here's one, this 143-318.12.
143-318.13 is the state statute. And, and the state statute trumps anything that we would have on our, um, rules of procedure, um...
Where does it say?
So, and our, and the attorney at the time that drafted the electronic procedure, uh, was Melanie, so, um, we, we just basically need to amend ours.
It is.
American, it's what the state statute requires us to do.
Yeah.
Let me, let me, if, if the council is okay with me talking with Chaplain about this further, and making sure we're, we're in compliance with everything that we're supposed to be...
Because I think the whole idea of this was for the ability for those who have announced ahead of time, whether it be because they're on vacation or whatever, or the six-hour window that we put in here, that they need to, um, call in, that there's an advance notice, that they have the right, I think that was the whole intent, is for them to have that right, but there had to be proper notification, whether it was at the beginning of the year, announcing that they're going to be on vacation, but they'll be able to call in, or they happen to be sick, or two hours away, whatever that is, I think we, Christine, to your point, if you talk to Chaplain, that we also address the issues of, um, circumstances that we're facing, we, like we are right now, I know for CRTPO, they were having trouble getting enough people to show up to those, the meeting for a regular meeting, but then they used something in the North Carolina statute or within their own rules and bylaws that allowed them to reach quorum without them being present, um, so if they can do that in a subcommittee or a committee like CRTPO, I, I would like to look into, can we do that with the village, given, I mean, we don't want to encourage us not showing up at meetings, I mean, and, and specifically being out of town, we want to be here, but in those unique circumstances that a sickness, but still can call in and listen, or if it's, uh, you know, happen to be on vacation, but still want to be able to vote, I think that was what the intent was, given what we ran into a couple of years ago, when, you know, council changed a, an agenda, added things to the agenda and stuff, and there was no ability to get a vote.
I'll work on that, Barbie, with, with Chaplain.
I would just be careful. Because someone could take complete advantage of it and say, nope, I called in, I was present.
Right.
I, I just caution.
We, we have to have written, like...
I understand, I understand, I'm just going to, I'm just going to...
Yeah.
Careful with, because for every, for every good step, there's, there's...
Yeah, there's a way to...
It's, it's, you're going to crack the door for something to go, oh.
Right.
So, that's just my other point, I think, I think the, the piece in here that says that, you know, that you, you know, you must have a quorum before, or it has to be written, and there's, it has to be a really extenuating circumstance.
Yeah.
And to your point about having a quorum, having us be there, I think that probably is, we, we start there, but then being able to vote and be able to call in, I think that, that, I mean, there, there was a reason we did that, and it, and it's like, you know, I see your point, though, I see.
I think we need to be able to establish quorum in the office, in-person has to be established before you can have a meeting.
From the, from the federal standpoint, from a federal government standpoint, they can't, if you're not there in person, yeah.
But they're doing that today, they're going to do a, think, vote on that.
I understand, under...
Normal circumstances, it also is...
This is a dire emergency, blah, 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 and because they have, you know, they're, they're with a pandemic.
So, so you're okay, you're okay, so let me get this straight, you're okay with let's, uh, having a meeting if, um, we reach a quorum, like, in this situation, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could not, given this right now, how's it stands, you two being here, Robert Epps being absent again, and Bob on the phone, his vote wouldn't count, but you guys, you couldn't do anything financially, because it's just you two, unless we change that rule about the mayor being able to vote, so there's a bunch of different things we have, we've got to look at here.
Well, I, from what I understand, from our, from this, we, Bob can vote, and it would count right now, he can't establish quorum, so if Jamie wasn't here, I wasn't here, you weren't here, he can't establish quorum, but I think these are so vague in anything that we decided to do, he could vote on being on the phone, except for quasi-judicial, closed sessions, and other confidential stuff.
I don't know.
Uh, can I, should I interject?
No.
Hold on one second, hold on, hold on, Barbie, go ahead, Bob.
Bob, go ahead.
Well, I, I was going to say, from everything that I was reading from Chaplain that she sent in a separate email, um, you know, it, it seems like when emergencies declared, uh, it's pretty straightforward, it was, it was a tornado, it was whatever, and we still had a meeting, and I was held up in a shed somewhere, or at a hotel, and I had no ability to get to the facility, uh, even with the village hall, all of this, I think, what you're saying, Joe, you, you, and Bob already, if, if an email's gone out, said, are you going to be there for the meeting, you know, and, and I respond, and I say, yes, I'm going to be present, I think it's all good, um, I think that when it comes to financials, you know, stuff like that is real important, I would think that that's where the demarcation would be, I mean, those things, I mean, from, from what, what you're saying, Danny?
Read number two.
I, I don't know, that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to figure out, Bob.
Yeah, if you read number two, conditions...
Yeah, for the national, the federal, I mean, we've all, even Marvin has, has declared a state of emergency, so, um, then the electronic rules will apply, but I don't like number five, because it contradicts the quorum situation, so we need to make sure that that is, that is taken care of, and we need to make sure that, that we, that we look at seven, which is voting a discussion, that anything on quasi-judicial matters, whoever is on the phone electronically will not be allowed to vote.
All right, but, but also, kind of chicken and the egg, we're also having a discussion about the mayor...
Which is changing the charter, which is an ordinance, which two people can't do either. So those are the types of things that...
So, it obviously needs to be, I think, having Chaplain here and, and moving this to that, and, and maybe a chance for Christina to talk with him to clean that up again, and him to answer questions, and us get this really pinned down as far as what establishes quorum, and how we go forward if, whether it's extenuating circum... and how we go forward if, whether it's extenuating circumstances, or a person has, at the beginning of the year, for instance, has said, I'm gonna be on vacation this time, but I want to participate in this meeting. Does he have a right to vote, and can we give him that right to vote? It just, obviously, needs to be cleaned up a little bit, because there's confusion on this. And, and again, we don't know how long this is gonna go, and, you know, Bob, we may go the next four meetings with you, and if we can't make financial decisions, that means we can't get a budget if you're not sitting in here. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I think, I think the premise is this policy only applies to the conditions that are set forth in number two, which basically is in that declaration of emergency. So all other policies would, would apply in, in normal circumstances, not when we're under a state of emergency. But let me, let me talk with Chaplin about number five, number seven, and number two, and make sure we're all on the same page. And he will be at the next meeting, so we can just, he'll be here, I can clean those things up with him, and he'll be here to answer questions.
Okay. Are we okay with that?
Yep.
Because it sounds like it's, we could be here hours for that. Okay. We may have to have you come in in a hazmat suit, and then to physically be here to approve the rule changes, so we can continue us. We'll see.
That's for you, Bob.
I got you.
All right. So, anyway, the, moving on is...
Administrator's report.
Administrator's report. I'm sorry, I was getting mixed up here on the thing. So, reports and updates. First up, E1 Administrator's Report.
So, I have a couple of things. Was meaning to pass this out a couple of weeks ago, but I've forgotten. This may, things may have changed since now, but this is a annual league conference that they do in May. I don't know if they're still doing it or not, but I just wanted to let y'all know, in case there may be some interest. We will continue to assess if they're gonna have that in the next couple of weeks, I'm sure. Second thing is, I'm passing this around, this is a Marvin leash law frequently asked facts. We've actually put it on our website for any of those that are interested at home listening, just so y'all have...
So, I'm getting a lot of questions on that. Who do they call? Yeah, I don't want to get in a situation where we're calling Derek. If they have an issue right there, that they're calling Derek, Derek has to go investigate, and stuff like that. I, I would think, or help me with that question, who do they call? And, and, you know, I suggested, I mean, this actually was spurred from our neighborhood, because the resident was not taking any action, and other residents were concerned that, and they used it, they literally have been apparently saying that there's no leash law, and that's why they continued doing what they were doing. Now that there is, I strongly suggested a letter from the HOA, we sent to them notifying them that there is a leash law now in effect. But the question's coming back to me is, what do we do if we have an incident? And I said, well, documentation is key, but that starts with calling who? The sheriff, or the...
Can you, can you add to that? Because one of the questions that I've gotten is if it's a aggressive dog, who, who they need to call. And that's animal control, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Not just like a loose dog, but like some, a dog that's being aggressive.
Right.
That is one that, that's a question that I have gotten.
Yeah, and I think the intent is, and I know there are people that walk their dogs with the dog not on the leash, so they're gonna be required going forward to have that dog on the leash.
Yeah, and, and that's my, so I've got, there's a guy that likes to let his dogs run around in the field that's directly behind my house, and drives my dog, it's absolutely insane, which in turn drives me bonkers. So I can, I can inform this person, I don't know who it is, but I can inform them that there's a leash law, and that they are required to have their dog on the leash.
It's on his property, he's doing it?
No, it's in the field right behind my house.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's in HOA common property, common areas. No, it's not, no, no, not their yard. I don't think they do in your own yard.
We can definitely do that, Barbie. I'm looking on the website to navigate them, where to, to look at the law, and it says lease law instead of leash law. So if you can just change that, that'd be great. But if anyone goes to our website and Googles leash law, once she gets this fixed, it should be, go here and type in, I'm just gonna type in leash law now, because that's what it says, but it should pop it up.
Okay.
Under Village Services.
Okay. And if we can add the thing about an aggressive dog, Barbie?
I'll, I'll get that, Barbie.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, is that who they would call as a non-emergency dispatch number, or the sheriff's office?
And the non-emergency?
It's on there.
It's on the leash.
It's on that sheet.
It's on the FAQ.
Okay, okay. I just was hoping we had it, we could just announce it.
Yeah, we do.
You have it right there.
You can call them, non-emergency.
Two, that's 704-289-1591, for those who are listening in for the taped version of this versus that.
Or you can call the county sheriff's office, 704-283-379.
Yep. Okay. Those are the two numbers that we recommend they call. Okay, as long as we have it on leash. In fact, I'll put that in my own phone, so I'll be able to answer that question for them, and pull that up immediately, so. Thank you.
And I do have one more thing to report, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. Earlier this month, the village had a settlement agreement and release with a couple of parties, and I just wanted to announce the settlement proceedings on that. It's case number 17, CVS 02431. The settlement agreement was entered between Ken Orndorf as the plaintiff, the village of Marvin, and Maria Scoot as individual capacities, and the collective parties. Let's see. Both defendants denied respective allegations and the claims of the action, and deny liability on this matter. Both parties desire to amicably compromise and to settle the actions. The defendant, Maria Scoot, by and through the Interlocal Risk Financing Fund of North Carolina, agrees to pay the plaintiff, Ken Orndorf, the sum of $14,000, $14,500 in full and final settlement of the action. Defendant, village of Marvin, through the Interlocal Risk Financing Fund of North Carolina, agrees to pay the plaintiff a sum of $3,000 in full and final settlement of the action. Again, that was case number 17, CVS 02431, and I'm just reporting that settlement agreement and release.
And just to be clear, that settlement was not paid from village of Marvin funds, it was under the insurance that...
That is correct.
We had. So, again, no parties denying any...
All parties were denying.
Well, all parties were denying any guilt, but that was a settlement after, this has been on over two, three years now that this has been going on, and moved to a federal court, I believe it was, and it was separated, in my understanding, was they, our insurance company decided to separate it, one against the village, and one representing the village only, and one representing Ms. Scoot.
Correct, yes.
And that's where we ended up, and the end of this, so.
And I have nothing further to report?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, because we don't have roads on here. I'm sorry. I do, do you have roads?
No.
I did hear back from AMT yesterday, and we are good to go with everything we need from DOT, as far as the pedestrian refuge on Joker. So he is putting together some estimates right now for that, for the cost, and we're also getting the encroachment agreement together to submit to DOT. So we should have some information back to you all to proceed with that in the next couple of meetings.
And has DOT gotten their study done yet?
I, I don't know if they have, but as Mike and I have talked, we, we're just gonna wait and sit around. I mean, we're gonna go ahead and, and take, take it and run with it. If we have to pay for it, then we just have to pay for it.
I mean, I'm hoping that, you know, maybe we can do some cost sharing, but if we can't get the roundabout done, I have, have a, you know, feeling, or have a...
So we'll, we'll have some more information a little bit later, next month, on that.
Okay. All right, good deal. Thank you.
And the only thing, just to go back on that law, attorney agreement, that the insurance paid for it, two separate cases were filed. Our deductible was $1,000 per case, is that correct?
Um...
I believe that's what it was, just, you know, so out-of-pocket costs for the village.
Yes.
It was $1,000 to defend ourselves from the insurance. They, they separated it, which created two separate cases.
I think you're right.
And I think our, you know, and I get, I just wanted to make the record straight, that that's what the outgoing cost was, not the, the total amount. Insurance covered it, but it was two separate cases.
I'd have to look at the deductible for that, that type.
I believe it is $1,000, so. I bet, you can correct me if I'm wrong down the room bed, if you want to look into that. So, okay. Anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next up, under reports and updates, planners report, Rohit. Anxious to hear your experience with Mr. Jones at the NC Main Street Conference update.
Absolutely, and I have been eagerly anticipating, telling you guys the report of what happened as well. So, we attended this conference, it was two weeks ago, and as I said...
Hey, can you talk a little bit louder, because this is as high as my phone gets?
And Bob, can you hear Rohit?
Yes, is that okay?
No, he, I can't hear Rohit.
Move this over a bit.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move the phones closer to each other, so Rohit, if you can speak a little louder, and we move the phones closer. I just want to make sure.
Do the phones have to be six feet apart?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll try to project, and also, my mic is right in front of my mouth. How's that?
That's good.
That sounds good. I can hear you.
Awesome. Okay. So as I said at the last council meeting, we got our money's worth in the first five minutes, because we met the Main Street Rural Planning Coordinator for our area. We actually had a meeting with him on Tuesday, and he told us some very interesting things that also we didn't really expect, but also are gonna be really good for, you know, strategic planning going forward. One is that he doesn't recommend us that we actually join the Main Street program, but we still can implement a lot of the things that they do in that program, like the, like the four pillars of how to develop a downtown. One, so in the report, basically, I've, I've gone a little more in depth than I think I will in this verbal report.
Hang on one second, Rohit, if you don't mind. I just want to interject and say, the reason that he doesn't want us to join now is because, not, not because of the village or anything, it's just because they don't typically have folks join that don't have a district already defined. So that's the only reason.
Oh, right, right. So we can, we can join...
I was about to add that.
Right. We can join the Main Street program once we've developed something that resembles a downtown, but he said mostly that program is for downtowns that are revitalizing and existing downtown, as opposed to creating one from scratch.
Right.
Regardless, we still have access to all of the resources that program participants would have, including the state departments that help the towns. And in the report, I've also listed a few of them. We have the Department of Commerce, which, which does Main Street programming and rural planning. We would be still communicating with this, the gentleman, Jeff Emery, a lot in terms of, you know, what the state can help us do, and, and the knowledge that they have from helping, you know, dozens of other towns do what we're doing. So that's a, that's an astounding resource, you know, that we got. We also have the State Historic Preservation Office, which is going to also be a great resource because of the thing, the, the main idea we have, that we're going to be rehabilitating all the existing buildings, and they like that a lot. So they're gonna be offering tax credits for the developers to do that, in the tune of 35% to 45%, depending on their eligibility. So that, that 35% to 45% is the cost of repurposing their building. The state and the federal offices of historic preservation will be offering that cost. So it'll be a little more easier for the property owners to follow through with the vision that we share. As well, I'm just blown away by the amount of impact a simple rebranding can have, and the branding and wayfinding, people are saying, you know, if you just give something a name that, that stands out, people will pour public support into that idea. And so I put in my report also, we consider going forward calling it the Marvin Heritage District, because the Village Center District is a name that's been associated with a project that's been on the shelf for over a decade. And with a new name, that can really spur some, some excitement, and with that excitement comes private investment. And that, that's the big thing that makes something like this happen. So I've also talked about municipal service district in my report, and I've, you know, since realized that, you know, since Jeff Emery was talking to us, he said that service district, which is a taxing district, should be considered as one of the, the last foundational, like organizational things. So in my report, I said we should do that first, but really, we should do that after the zoning district is established and we've rezoned the properties. So that would be not this upcoming fiscal year, but the one after that, the '21, '22 fiscal year. That will give us a lot of time to determine the boundaries, and also the tax rate, and also have that economic analysis that I have budgeted within the general fund to see, you know, how much we should be taking out a loan on, and how much, like, the time period that loan should be. And that's, that's effectively what I have in, also included in that planner's report, is a timeline of both the general timeline of how to develop a downtown, and also the process of establishing a municipal service district. It's actually pretty simple. Give a report, and then we notify the property owners, and then we adopt it at two consecutive meetings. And on the, on the last page of my report, I have the statute that shows how we're given the authority and the exact details on how to establish it. But I just want to say, in addition to that, that a lot of the property owners are on board, and if we tell them this idea that, you know, we'll be establishing a special taxing district, and then we will be paying for the utilities and the infrastructure that's required for your property to be able to develop, they should be, you know, sold on that idea.
Plus, there's zoning changes too, right?
Yeah, so there's two, there's two components of the district. There's the zoning, and there's the taxing district. So the zoning district is going to be a rezoning of these properties to say, once we develop the zoning district in the planning board, we will rezone those properties in the council, and then those properties will be allowed to develop as per the zoning regulations that we develop. And then the second part of it is the taxing district, which is kind of separate, but it will pretty much be the same boundary, which is these properties have an interest in developing additional infrastructure than the rest of the town, which is obvious. So that's why we need to tax these properties a little bit more. And the going range is between 14 and 21 cents, which is what I heard at the conference. So I'm currently thinking 20 cents, but of course, since we're gonna be doing it the following fiscal year, not the upcoming one, we'll have some time to figure that out.
So, say that back again, the 20 cents, what is that?
The 20 cents would be, it's, it's an estimated value right now, but it would be an additional special tax that would be levied on just these properties that are in the downtown district.
It's an overlay district, so you would basically define, let's just say, this entire corridor from Marvin School to Joker, just conceptually, all the parcels that are on this corridor, would have an overlay 20 cent tax increase district.
But what if they did nothing with their land?
Then he's, he's discussing trying to have a deferred program, where if you're just completely, completely residential, and you want to stay that way, and you don't want to develop it, then you're deferred in some way, shape, or form. We're still looking into that, but that's, that's kind of what the talking points would be.
And could we see for some property owners that have significant amount of land in this corridor, could we see them potentially subdividing the frontage portions, where they have access to the property in the back, but then, you know, and one of the things that I heard, or one of the concerns I heard, is how do you, when you do this corridor, if it touches property that have large parcels that have horses, for instance, how do you create a barrier between those frontage properties that would be part of the heritage district, or whatever?
So that's part of the consultant that he's planning on hiring next year to come up with these rules and ordinance businesses?
That, right. That can be addressed in the zoning regulation. Currently, we have it that, you know, you have a parent tract, commercial can only be located within 300 feet of a major road.
Okay.
So when you have a property like Scott Letts, whose property goes, you know, 26 acres back, all the way back to Metalark, he's, by the zoning district regulation, he can only have commercial in the front, even though his property goes back.
Right.
And then you're also looking at a transitional density of residential in the back. So even the furthest back properties would only have a rural type of density, and then once you start to go towards the front, then you can have a little more suburban type density, and then in the very front, you can have commercial. That stuff can be regulated by the zoning district.
And the only thing, in looking at your report, the only thing that would caution us is this, where the 35, the 45... And the only thing, in looking at your report, the only thing I would caution us is this, where the 35 to 45% of the rehab from the federal office would get rehab costs or reimbursed or whatever, however you look at it. Once you get, my understanding is, once you go historical district, that throws a whole new, especially if you do this whole corridor historic, it throws a whole new level of requirements on us, and we've got to be careful if that's the direction we want to go. And calling it Heritage District versus a Historical District, I mean, that, so that 35 to 45% may not, we may not qualify for if we choose not to go down the Historical District route.
Right, we would have to have this area designated as a Historical District, of course, not all the properties would be eligible, only probably the Crane House, the churches, maybe Scott Letts' house. So a few properties would be eligible, but it would be on the burden of the developer or the property owner to make sure that they comply with the historic preservation, not us.
But what the mayor's saying is, there's other caveats, if we are identified as that, like, we have to have a historic advisory board, we've got to have things in place for them. So I think that's what he's getting at, is there are other things. I think the gist of what you're saying is, the conference went well, we're still continuing to assess the cost, still continuing to assess the process and how we're going to do it, and the cost is really going to be the main driver, in hopes that we find that from our economic consultant that we're gonna hire, so-
Right.
The momentum's not stopped, it's just-
It's just that we have a lot more tools now, and we also realize that there are a lot of different state departments and regional departments that are willing to help us for free and give us money too. So in terms of the finances of making this happen, you know, we have private investment and other government agencies that can help us, you know, with the funding, and we don't have to take it all on ourselves.
That is, I do want to make a differentiation though, because that is going to be very far in view between of the total cost of the project, so just want to be careful that we don't mislead people to say that, you know, we're not gonna have any costs, there's gonna be a lot of costs associated, so.
Based on their analysis, they said the municipalities are putting around 40, 45% of the investment, and then the rest of the investment is coming from elsewhere.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions about this whole thing?
Nope, that was great, thank you.
Okay, we will be continuing to develop, you know, the specific steps as we find them out, and we'll be continuing to update you. The planning board's working on the zoning district, and you'll be also seeing that maybe in a few months.
Awesome. Good job.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anything else, any other comments? Next up, we have open topics. Does anybody have any?
Nope.
I have two.
Oh my god.
Okay, just a notice that I got from Waxahau, we had a, this morning, we have an alarm go off at whatever time it was, about Mecklenburg doing, what do they call it? Stay-at-home order. Waxahau imposed the same order, which, the way I read it, you can't even be on the streets in Waxahau unless it's for absolute necessary, whatever that means and stuff, and the mayor imposed that, and that took effect, I think, the other day, I could read it for you, I could share that with you. However, Christina, and I think, I got, we got notice of that through Chaplin, right, is something that I could possibly sign in. I would say that there's really no need, and because they had, like, they have issues where they have retail areas or gathering places. I couldn't really identify Marvin just yet, other than the park, which we've closed, as a gathering place for anyone to even consider imposing this. But I think Christina shared with me the order that came through for our neighboring town of Waxahau, they've imposed it, now Mecklenburg County has, and I'd just like to point out that my wife, you know, I said, I don't really see a need to do that, but there's some verbiage there, the resolution, or is it a resolution that they sent? That was actually ordered by the village, or the town of Waxahau, but my wife reminded me before I left that a lot of these spring breakers who are now kind of looking back and reflecting on what they were doing and realizing how bad that was, and they actually said it was because, and I think they used the term something about the old white-haired guys, I guess, the people in office or whoever, weren't, didn't properly notify them how serious this was. And I think that's the, one of the things that, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know, that that's what's happening around our towns, I don't see a need, I think, council, you tell me if it's, there's a need to do a shutdown, I'd hate to get to a point where we can't even walk.
Well, also, my understanding, even with Durham and all these other, the larger cities, it is a shutdown to say, stay at home, my understanding is, there's really not an enforcement of it, it's just a-
Recognition.
Right, they cannot, they cannot or will not arrest you for-
That will-
It's a class-two misdemeanor.
That's what I was getting ready to say, because that was one thing that Charlotte, or who, I don't know if it was the, I don't know if it was the Charlotte City Council or Mecklenburg County Commission that I was watching, when they ordered the stay-at-home, the, they had somebody there from the Sheriff's Department, and they said, you can absolutely, if you were just out, you know, not on essential business, and there's a whole list of what's considered essential, then you can be arrested for a misdemeanor. Now, whether the DA decides to prosecute that or not, that's a whole nother bag of, you know, ball of wax, but, I mean, it is, per what that, they said in that meeting, it is a class-two misdemeanor.
The gentleman, I think it was the mayor from Durham, said that, you know, we're not out there actively arresting people if we see you driving, we're not gonna pull you over and go and-
Right.
But they would go by the basketball courts and go, okay, guys, you have to disperse.
Right.
If in the event that you go, uh, choose not to, then they would take some type of action. But anyway, I don't see the need in it, because there's, we don't have a commercial district, we don't have gathering places, we've done what we can with the park, and I think we're-
I just think, there's something in place, I think Chaplin shared it with Christina, they forwarded it to me, I didn't like the signs, I was close to martial law, if you will, and I don't think we're anywhere near that, but I think we just need to be smart, and we have been smart, it's based on what I've seen, there's a lot less traffic, there's really even in the stores, believe it or not, shopping at Costco, I was in South Carolina a couple of weeks ago, shopping at Costco, they were letting so many people in at a time, and while I was in there, there was, it almost seemed like nobody was in there. But to that point, South Carolina, I know the governor imposed, you can't have three or more people, even on the beach, so Seabrook Island is basically going to impose their own thing and notify, you walk on the beaches, and like, my family of five technically can't be together, even though we're sort of quarantining ourselves and being only with our own, you know, units. So it's just, I just wanted to bring it up to you guys, so I didn't think it was, there's a need to do anything or take any action, hopefully, it doesn't get to that point, but we have something in place, would that be correct?
Yes, we did, yes.
And I would certainly consult with you guys before I just did it, because I don't know if that's what, you know, but apparently, the mayor has the right to do that, impose that, and it's, I just would want you guys to know that and stuff.
Thanks, Joe.
The second point to this is, that I want to bring this up, I'm a news junkie, I watch the news all the time, and I shared this with Christina yesterday, and this is just something that is just irking me. But how we get this across to our leaders above us, and I mean on the federal level, I would like to look into some sort of resolution where we could get, put something in place that we share, first check with the league, what'd you say, the league? The league, as well as our legislators on the state level, but we get this ground swell, so how do we get the message to our people at the federal level? I understand that we are in unique times, and while we're in these unique times, what has happened, and how much delay has happened in the last seven days because of certain groups wanting to get their pork, if you want, in this, we're trying to pass a bill here, at the federal level, to help individuals and stuff. I would like to see something, or us take action as individuals, because I am so frustrated with what has happened. In these unique times, if a national emergency is called, and we have to take action on a federal level, there's gonna be money. I would say, and I understand that pork is always, you know, states want their things, and in those circumstances, if there could be some self-imposed law or legislation that they pass, that when we are under situations like we are, national emergency, that the bills that are passed are only for those, and I don't know how the wording would be, but those are only for that. And I'll give you a for instance, somehow, one side of the aisle has taken advantage of this situation where we're passing a $2 trillion, 2.1, the last I heard, trillion-dollar package, and in that package are millions of dollars going to the Kennedy Center. That's a perfect example. What that has to do with our, this serious situation that we're in, I can't fathom, but they're taking advantage of it, because that's what the law allows, that on certain bills, but what I'm trying to say is, we can get a ground swell, I mean, the community, I don't know how they organize, but we can have our own grassroots, if you will, and then we create a resolution, share it with the neighboring towns, and then before you know it, maybe that's shared through all towns within the state of North Carolina, and that somehow goes to a point where we're notifying, all we're asking, we're asking the state, or I'm sorry, our federal elected officials, that in these unique times, that we are, they're not allowed to add anything that has nothing to do with the, is that, am I making sense?
No, you're making perfect sense, however, and the only thing I would say, it is perfect sense, I totally 100% agree with you, but as the Senate put together the framework of what, in this particular instance, when the Senate put together-
I see what you're trying to say, I see what you're trying to say, because the, you know, Mayor Lyles, way back when during the impeachment proceedings, basically felt like, you know, it's necessary for the council to make some sort of resolution, you know, of some sort regarding the impeachment, you know, and that he should be impeached, or wherever it would be. And I see what you're trying to do, and, you know, and it ought to be interesting, you know, marching up the ladder, I was on the phone with the governor, who was addressing, I don't know if anybody else was here, and, you know, it was pretty normal boil of grace, it wasn't, it was how to handle the stuff here at the ground level. But yeah, when you see this stuff going on, yes, it's very frustrating, you begin to wonder what the point of government, and how it serves. And so, you know, I don't know what difference it's gonna make, it'd be interesting to find out, going through the league, and then, you know, going up the ladder.
Yep, and then Councilman Lean was just in the middle of talking, I don't know if you heard him, so you kind of jumped on him, but that's a good point, and I'll let Jamie finish here.
So Mitch McConnell actually put together the four pillars of framework in which they should only work by, and as politics would always seep in, whether you're right or left, they just said, I know that those are there, but we're not gonna, we're gonna still inject what we want, which ultimately went back to, so the framework was there, but your politics is still politics.
Yeah, so, but basically-
It extended it, it extended it by five or six days.
Yeah, it did, and it's like, only because of a party leader coming back and saying, no, we don't want this. So basically, the resolution I'm asking for is opposing introduction of unnecessary and irrelevant issues pursuant to the crisis and emergency that we are facing. If they can sign that into law, because it's gonna, it's gonna happen regardless of who has power, whether it's Republicans, Democrats, independents, whoever has power, they're gonna have the ability to kind of push things, but then now, you know, I mean, I know there was talk of some party saying, hey, we have a situation here where some members of Congress can't show up because they've self-quarantined, let's take advantage of it, because they need our votes, so let's get in what we want. They were asking for the world, and that's where I'm really concerned, is they're already identifying, they're putting this so fast together, that they're already identifying that it's gonna be more beneficial in the state of South Carolina to stay on unemployment, because you're gonna get reimbursed on unemployment more than you make, it's over $23 an hour they're paying, and that, the average person makes $15 an hour, so why go back to work? But my whole point to this is, the irrelevant things that bills, and I'm only talking, I understand how the sausage is made, and they get agreements, and that always happened, there's always pork in any bill, but when it comes down to a situation that is unprecedented, where you have national emergencies, introducing these type of things, and again, if we can do a resolution and get other things, we throw it, to your point, Bob, up the ladder, which is not necessarily, but how do you get groups to, you know, govern? I think we can, we can show our concern at this level by a simple resolution, and see if it takes, you know, takes off, and then, you know, then it becomes something that we're demanding that of our, be responsible. And I know there was a senator, just so you guys know, in Arizona, that was proposing, if they couldn't in the Senate get a bill passed, that they, their pay be held until they could get a bill passed. So they're, you know, which was interesting, I thought, but then, that's still not solving the problem, I think we're getting into what, what is beyond what is reasonable for something of this crisis. That's all I'm saying, we can look at it, we can direct Christina to look at it, at a, at the league, and also at the state legislature, but I just wanted to throw that out there, because it was a concern, or it was certainly a concern for me. Other than that, Bob, do you have anything else as far as open topics?
No, back to what you were saying regarding where we stand with this home lockdown, that's terminology or whatever, the, I guess, I know, following the news like we all do, and like you do, obviously, it's Mecklenburg County, that, and I listened carefully with, I guess her name is Deanna Dior, if I got her name right, that was saying that, yes, we're gonna, you know, it's a second misdemeanor, if you were found on the street, driving a car, it was 60 days in jail, and a $1,000 fine. But then she came out on the other end saying that, you know, we're not gonna really enforce it, you know, but let it be known, there is a cost, and it was done on a county level. And then here you are, mentioning, which thank you for sharing, about the mayor of Waxahau. I would assume right now, because of the ruralness, Union County in its whole has not done that, as Mecklenburg County has, because it's obviously more, you know, there's more density, and it would be like, for example, Livingston, Wyoming, you know?
Right.
You know, Livingston, I mean, it's like, you're out, you're out in Wyoming to Montana, why would you-
Right.
Do that?
Yeah.
And so I think, to what even Jamie has said, I don't think, you know, we need to be concerned about that, I mean, you know, people walking down Heritage Oak Lane, seriously?
And I want to encourage people to get out, and I don't think we need to do anything, I think that's what we've gotten to, I just wanted to make you aware of, it's happening out there, there's something in place that we could quickly go to, but I would say that I would consult with all of you individually before I would even consider anything like that, because I don't think we're anywhere near that, so.
Mayor, have you got any pressure or comments that you should make a statement to the community? I know we have a website, have you been asked to address it in any way, you being the mayor?
I have not, I think people are, you know, understand this, and the severity of it, I have not been asked, I'm taking guidelines from the Union County, we get reports from that, so nothing really.
The county hasn't, that county hasn't come out and said anything, like, we're taking our cues from, I mean, Mecklenburg County's coming out and doing this because they are, they're having a large outbreak, the same as Cabarrus County, they just had their two first deaths, we haven't, we barely had any cases in Union County, we haven't had any deaths, so that's-
Last week, Friday, heard the commissioner said we had four.
And that's like, that's why, I mean, I don't think Joe needs to go out and say anything.
No.
We've put stuff out there on MailChimp, we put it on Nextdoor, hey, we're here for you, here's numbers to call if you need us, but besides that, I don't mean, less government is more.
Union County will let us know if they need us to issue the, like, the- Union County will let us know if they need us to issue the, like, the declaration. They pretty much hold our hand through the process. They did that with the hurricane and that sort of thing. So if they need something from us, they will, they will let us know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Final thing, review of action items. Barbie?
I can handle that if you want me to, Barbie.
Sure, go ahead.
So first thing, taxation breakdown on the Village Hall slash church property. Off-duty patrol will stop until further notice, and staff will continue to assess. Work session annexation plan, the next work session will have the annexation plan slash package, identify parcels, and also discuss fee schedules associated with the park. We will add one full-time police officer, law enforcement officer, and the associated tax increase into fiscal year 2021. We will contract, will negotiate the contract changes, as mentioned, in the meeting with Union County and Chaplin. We will work on and also continue to assess the meeting minutes for fiscal year 1314 to figure out why we dropped officers during that time. We will assess a streetlight policy and respond to the complainant that had the request on Waxaw Marvin Bonds Grove. We will ask AMT to assess Village Hall lease and savings that are associated with any groundwork, water sewer, anything that they can help with, to solidify that cost a little more. We will add the question of aggressive dogs to the leash law, frequently asked questions, and repost to the internet or the website. And then, I will work on a budget amendment for the All Works contract for the $1,000 differential, if needed.
And we will update the official schedule and post the...
New meetings.
New meeting location. And we will add action items to the next agendas. Oh, I guess we need to change that.
All right.
Did I forget anything, Barbie?
No.
Okay. Council comments, Bob?
No, other than, you know, I thank you very much for accommodating me to be, you know, participating remotely during these times. And, you know, personally, my wife and I were being very cautious regarding our ages and health conditions. So I appreciate that. The other thing that's heartening is the rapid pace in which a lot of the things that we're talking about, closing up donor holes, addressing the, you know, police force, the, you know, where we're at with the Village Hall or the Village, the Village Hall and Heritage District, how we seem to be going at a rapid pace accomplishing things. And it's good to see. We're not getting hung up. We're addressing issues. Whether they come to pass or not, we're addressing them. So I'm glad to be participating with all of you to make all of this happen.
Thank you, Bob. Jamie?
No, I just, I'll comment what I would have, that with the severity of everything that's going on, I think the local, state and federal government has done a tremendous job. And we won't see the final results of it for some time to come. But I think they've done a tremendous job as far as getting on top of it, taking the actions that they've taken, the testing stuff that's out there, the bringing together of manufacturing companies that, to come up with new and innovative ways to address this whole thing. I think they've done a tremendous job, to include President Trump and his administration. I mean, this could be, this could really have turned out really bad, and not saying that it's not. But it could have been a heck of a lot worse. And so, I commend all government agencies that have stepped up and addressed this, to include ours here, putting all this stuff together and information and coordinating, you know, everything that's going on, have to put this meeting in place. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman? Mayor Pro Tem?
Good meeting. Bob, we missed you, but glad you're on the phone. Staff, thank you, as always. To all of the Marvin residents and North Carolinians, as we all are, be safe, be smart. Don't go out and do anything silly. This is a very extraordinary time in our lives. And we know that it is stressful and can be trying. So just, you know, remain patient and vigilant and take care of yourselves.
Thank you. Kim? I'd like to thank staff, too, particularly Christina, as we have worked with her. And I know, staff, there's a lot of concerns on your part as far as working and stuff. And Christina, you know, we're kind of leaving it to you to kind of make a range for times and working and the changes that are all being communicated with the community, as far as appointments and how we're taking our precautions. So thank you, staff and Christina, for continuing with that. Thank you to the new committee members for the website stepping up on, for helping out, Noonan Camp, Col Black and Chuck Roddy, Chuck Roddy, I guess it is, for stepping up and volunteering their time and efforts to improving a part of our community, which is the website. Thank you, Rohit and John Jones, as well, for taking the initiative to attend the NC Main Street Conference and spending a couple of days out there. That's real important and integral part of moving this community forward and making Marvin the special place it is. Also, just finally, you know, we are in difficult times here. And I'd like to encourage all our citizens to just be smart, take it upon ourselves to do your own small part, whatever it is, follow the guidelines of CDC, local, state and federal government. You know, one of the reasons China and South Korea were supposedly very effective in reducing that curve and leveling that curve is because they're authoritarian society, where they were basically told, we are in the US a free society, would like to keep it that way as much as possible. But it's all depending on the community to do their part, individuals to do their part. And I think that message is getting across. And I appreciate all the things that people in our community are doing and even stepping up for that matter, however way, and participating. I got a call from one individual who has a line on her family manufacturing shirts, and they are now manufacturing masks. I put them in touch with Union County leaders to address our situation here, because they've already taken orders from other states. Why not help out us? So I encourage anyone who has any connections within the community to reach out to me or to our staff. We'll put them in touch with Union County individuals that can help with that. With that, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Does that move?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.